Okay, call the meeting in order, do roll call. Charlie Bundy here, Brendan Bunter here, Tyler Evans here, Julie Lyon.
Here.
Larry Vandeburg.
Here.
Matt Wotnick.
Here.
Donna Pelkner.
Here.
And Jared Peterson. First thing is to approve today's agenda and August meeting minutes. Today's um for S A P R I F F. Five E. This is the day stuff.
All right, just.
Today's five E.
You have a space instead of an F.
Well, there's only one R in it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yep. I may have gone back and changed.
The last month's four B, Monty Kootmas, M O N T E.
Not Monty Python, Monty.
Same person.
And then under public time, three B. Oh, there was no update, never mind. I read it different in my head.
Four E. A is installation, I N S T A L L. I suppose, and also on that one, four E A Avenue, I suppose you better put a period afterward, A V E. You got one up there on the other street.
And it's an abbreviation.
And then probably even after street as well, there on that same one, S T.
Oh, we got that one. On the next page.
Should be under.
Okay. We're good.
And same thing under H. Four H, period behind the avenue there too.
Oh, and then Sherman.
I had an H in Sherman. And then was that called Fourth Street?
Yes, four.
It was Fourth Street. Sherman Avenue and Fourth Street, so then I just gotta add the S T period after that. I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda and August's meeting minutes.
Motion for time, if you can give a second.
I'll second.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on to September claims.
I have a question.
Yes.
Colton Redden, economic development. Got eleven thousand.
That's our last final payment, probably budget for the year.
The ones in red are the one, oh, I'm sorry, did not print those out in color here. There's a few that were still A C H payments.
Is it the missing ones?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, Kipol, we didn't have anything from them, I just forgot to take them off.
Oh, okay, so that's just non-avoid here. And then the banner one, fifth one down from the top. There's no, not there.
One would probably be, soon as I see it in the bank, four thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars.
Is that for the, those payoffs from last month? Is that what those are? Okay.
Well, one of them.
One of them anyways.
The second payment request.
The second.
What is the wealth management T F R?
That was the health insurance that they were paying for Michaela. Oh, no, wealth management, no, that is our U S bank loans for clean water and the
Okay.
drinking water.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep.
It's the first time I've seen it listed like that, that's why I was wondering, I was like.
When they come through on the bank statement, it just says wealth management.
Okay.
It took some digging to see what they were actually for. And hopefully as I get this improved a little bit, you'll be able to see where we are with each loan.
Yeah, I think thanks to we're gonna try to have a cheat sheet every so often, just so we know what we're on budget.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd definitely be helpful.
I'm working on putting all of two thousand twenty-five's bank statements in fund accounting for Banyan. And going forward, that prints that out, it keeps track of everything for us, so we know where we're at. With each.
So that makes it easier to do the budget next year.
Yep.
Well, I guess I don't see any other issues.
The pheasant land for the signs?
So we put up uh permit required.
Permit, okay, that's what those are, okay. I was like, I thought we already did those other signs like a year or so.
I will make a motion to approve.
A motion from Matt, can you give a second?
No.
Second from Larry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move on to public time, we got S D P A A. Property owner, city insurance, health position.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So your little packets, your agenda says Becky will be here, she apologizes, she has bronchitis. And so cannot get through about three words before she starts coughing horrendously, so. I told Becky to just go ahead and stay back, so you get me instead, so. My name's Lynn Brenn, I'm the executive director of the South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, and I'm just gonna kinda give you a little bit of an overview of the pool, what we are, who we are, what we do, and stuff like that, and then we've also brought our quote to provide coverage for the city, if that's something that you guys think would be a good, if you think would be a good partner for you going forward for your property and your liability coverages, okay? So in your packet, you've got a couple different packets of information, so we're gonna talk first about the one that looks like there's some little slides with lines on it. This is just gonna give us a quick overview of, again, the S D P A and stuff like that, so again, my name's Lynn Brenn, executive director, I have been with the pool in some fashion for about twenty-five years. So I worked for the claims vendor that we work with to do our claims for about seventeen and a half years, and then in two thousand seventeen, I came over to the administration side of the pool. I was the director of member services, deputy director, and now I'm the executive director of the pool, so have kinda grown up with the pool, the pool has been my life for quite some time. The S D P A is a risk-sharing pool, so it's similar to insurance in that we provide property and liability coverages for public entities across South Dakota, we have been in existence since nineteen oh, yep, here's the, this is your packet.
Well, this is me.
This is for you. So we have been in existence since nineteen eighty-seven. We were formed in response to what's called the hardening insurance market, basically that meant that back in the late eighties, the commercial insurance market really wasn't sure how to address public entities. They were either pricing it so expensively that public entities couldn't afford it, or the coverages that they were getting were just not sufficient, because again, those commercial insurers just really weren't sure how to address the exposures that public entities were facing, because it's really not the same as the other commercial players in the field, you know, contractors and things like that, they have certain exposures, and public entities really just have a different level of exposure, so. Fast forward to today, we have about five hundred and ten, actually over five hundred and ten local government entities. We do cities, counties, conservation districts, townships, and other special purchasing groups like water sewer districts, ambulance fire districts, things like that. Currently, we have a hundred and ninety-eight of the three hundred and eleven incorporated cities in South Dakota, so we're we're pretty excited about our ability to provide service to the public entities in South Dakota. And we're very proactive, so we're gonna, if you ever come to one of the conferences that we're at, this is Hampton Anderson, he's one of my member services folks. We actually just drove up from Pierre, we're at the county convention today and tomorrow, we'll be back at the Lake Conference in a couple weeks, we're going to conservation districts in a couple weeks. So we're really about getting out in front of folks and talking about, hey, what risks are you facing? And what kind of tools and resources can we bring to the table to help you either recognize or maybe minimize some of those risks that you guys are facing, so. A lot of information that you hear from us and see from us, especially if you come onboard with the pool, is gonna be a lot more focused about risk management, loss control than, hey, you have a claim, now what? We're like, hey, if we're going to have a claim, let's get you in a better spot, so that that process goes a little easier. So the next slide in the packet, we talk about our board of directors. We have an eleven-seat board of directors, so it's folks who are members of the risk pool are the ones that are deciding how investments are made, they're responsible for making sure that the coverages that we're offering are appropriate for the risks that we're facing. Right now, we have, our board is again eleven folks, and seven of those seats are occupied by municipal representatives. So Sarah Rankin is the executive director, executive director of the municipal league. She will always have a seat on the board, or that position will, so as long as Sarah stays your director, then she'll be on our board. And then we have six other municipal representatives, and those are identified in your packet, so if you ever had a question about who that might be. Bill O'Toole from Sioux Falls is actually not on our board right now, but instead, Michael Schulte from Volga is there, so someone fairly close. Justin Wyland actually moved to T, he's the city administrator for T, so. And then Paula and Carrie, those are some of the ones that are more local to you guys here in Colton. So some potentially familiar faces that you might hear about and stuff like that that are on our board, that certainly are there representing what would be your interest. The next slide we'll talk about is our service team, so our loss control folks, they actually come out of Plankington, so again, not super far away. They'll do some loss control surveys, again, help you kind of identify those risks. We do have property appraisals done for our members who have property coverage, we do bring in a national firm for those property appraisals, just because we like to have someone who is really out in the market, seeing what's happening beyond South Dakota, so that gives us a flavor of where we need to be. And it gives us some good insight coming in like, okay, we know that, hey, construction rates are going up, so maybe our trending and our values need to be reflecting some of that as well. So we just partnered up with H C A this past year. They are a phenomenal team to work with, and they would come out, if you come onboard, they'll come out and they'll do an onsite appraisal, just to make sure that your property values are where they need to be for those locations we cover. Claims Associates does our claims administration, they come out of Sioux Falls, and that's the one that I worked for for about seventeen and a half years, they have been a longtime partner of ours. They also do the claims for the workers' compensation fund, so I believe you guys are already a participant in that work comp fund, so that process would be pretty easy transition if you ever needed to do that. And then your administrative team, and we'll talk about those guys in just a second. So those folks come from all over the state, because we are primarily remote-based, we do have an office, kind of, in Fort Pierre, that's where if you need to mail us something, if it's official, we'll have you send it to Fort Pierre, because there's someone there to sign it, otherwise, we keep a P O box in Sioux Falls, because I come from Harrisburg normally. And then I have an underwriter that works out of Sioux Falls. Hampton's actually gonna be based out of Murdo, he's new, he's training, so he gets to come with me on all these things and stuff like that. We have a gentleman in Spearfish, so we're really kind of all over the state, making sure that our members are taken care of appropriately. Talked about our internal team, Becky Brunzing will probably be your normal member services gal, she comes from Wagner. We have two underwriters that handle the day-to-day processing of coverage changes, things like that, that's Christina Peterson, she's also my deputy director, and then Petra Nichols. Those gals you probably won't see quite as often, if you come to the convention at the Lake Conference in Pierre in about three weeks, you could meet them, because they will, they will both be there for that. But yes, this internal team would act as your agent. If you decided to come onboard with the pool, you have access to any one of us. You've got an org chart in your packet, in your folders there, and that's gonna give you access, it gives you our emails and our cell phone numbers, so you can give us a call, shoot us a text kind of whenever you need to, right, because we know that unfortunately, business doesn't just happen eight to five Monday through Friday, there's questions you might have after that, and we're here to serve you. Benefits, there's a little sheet in your folder that talks about all the membership benefits that you have. The things that I really wanna just kind of focus on is, again, those loss control surveys, the property surveys, we kinda talked about those a little bit. We have two hotlines that you've got some brochures for in your, in your packet as well, and those hotlines have been really useful for some of our members, because what it does is it gives you at least an hour of free time that you can connect with legal counsel. The first one we developed was the employment practices hotline, and we developed that because we were seeing that there were a lot of employment-related questions and claims that were coming in that really could have been eliminated, or at least made a little bit easier to work through and defend. If only we would have been able to connect our member with, with an attorney who is is very experienced in employment law, so we created the employment practices hotline. It has been a huge success. That was probably about ten years ago, we started that hotline. About seven years ago, we realized that there were other questions that were not necessarily employment-related, so we brought up the government practices hotline. They now call the same number, and we'll, we'll hook you up with an attorney who can kind of help you outwork through some of your questions and things like that. But have been fantastic resources. During COVID, we use these resources to get some information out to members, because we were kind of, the whole world was thrown into this conundrum with not a lot of guidance on what we needed to do, so we relied heavily on our hotlines, hey, what does the law say? What can we do, what can't we do, what should we be doing, what are we obligated to do? While still keeping our best resources, which is our human resources, safe during that really scary and questionable time, so. Those are really the two biggest and best resources, we're super proud of those. We get nothing but positive feedback, so those are be something that we would certainly encourage you guys to take a look at if, when you come onboard to the pool member services visits, so we would have just like, if you've got a local agent now that comes and sits down with you, our member services folks would come out, or I would come out and sit down, go through any questions that you might have, those are kind of on demand as you want them, or we seek you out if we haven't heard from you, or like, hey, how's it going, can we come and stop by? Things like that. Your claims liaison, that would be myself or Becky, if you've got questions or problems with claims, give us a call, we'll work through it. Most of the folks at Claims Associates I've worked with, I trained most of them, so have no problem going in and sitting down, having conversations with them about how the claims are going, stuff like that. And then the final thing on our benefits slide is credit, so after the first year, you have an opportunity to earn some credits on your invoice. We've got a renewal credit, which is super easy, you just return the packet back by the time that the due date, so it was super easy to get that. We have a loss control credit. And what happens is you go through your loss control survey in year one, and then you qualify for that credit for three years. And if there's any recommendations that they make that you're having trouble accomplishing, you just give us a call and we help you work through that. Because our goal is to get you the credits by getting you the resources that you need to make sure that those loss control recommendations are taken care of, right? Because if you're safer, you've got less claims, you're safer, your people are safer, everybody can be happy, right? And then the final one is the loss ratio credit, you have a little less control over that, because that's your claims dollars to your contribution dollars. But again, good loss control practices, generally that helps keep that in line, so. Some of the benefits that you would have access to through the pool. Coverage notes, we're gonna talk a little bit about this, but then we'll kind of hit on it too when we talk about the numbers that will are in our quote, so for property coverage, the biggest thing that I kind of wanna point out to you folks is right now you have a co-insurance, which means that you're required by your commercial carrier to keep your buildings at a certain percent of their replacement cost, or there are things called co-insurance penalties, we don't have that. We take kind of that responsibility for maintaining your property values on us by doing those property surveys, and then trending those values every year. The other thing is, you currently have a separate deductible for wind and hail, so you have a thousand dollar per occurrence for your property, so say this building has a fire, you would have a thousand dollar deductible, but if there's a wind claim or a hail claim, it's twenty-five hundred dollars. We have just, we've only quoted the thousand dollars, because that's what your all other peril is, we don't have a separate wind hail deductible. We like to think that that helps budgeting be a little easier, like you hope you have no claims. But if you happen to have a wind hail claim as opposed to an all other peril, that extra fifteen hundred bucks might be, you know, that sometimes can, can put a pinch in some budgets and stuff like that, so. Just a couple things that are a little bit different about our property program versus some of the commercial markets. We do, all of your buildings are written right now and quoted by us at full replacement costs, so basically for us, what that means is if a building is completely destroyed, the value you have associated with that particular location is not your limit. You have access to the blanket limit, which is the total of all your property values covered with us. That becomes your limit for the claim. So our blanket limit is always gonna be the most that we would pay in any one occurrence, regardless of the number of locations involved. But it's nice, because again, if you've got a location, one location, say we have a bad fire, and we've got a completely destroyed building, maybe when we went through the renewal, that building was worth half a million, but now if you tried to build anything right after COVID, suddenly, you know, a piece of plywood went from six bucks to sixty-three bucks, and you're like, oh, okay, that escalated quickly. So now, if that were to happen, you'd have access to that blanket limit, because we've worked through, we've got the valuations and stuff like that, so. It's, it's a pretty great method for covering property, especially when things can fluctuate so much, but, so that's how we handle our property exposures and stuff like that. We do have enhanced crime coverage, and we've quoted that for you. Enhanced crime, really, the biggest thing that that serves is to provide some employee dishonesty coverage. The nice thing about the enhanced blanket crime coverage is it covers all your full-time, part-time employees, all your elected and appointed officials. And it also then would satisfy those statutorily required bonds. So your finance officer bond, you probably purchased that separately potentially. The enhanced crime coverage is fifty bucks, it's a million dollars in coverage, it satisfies your finance officer's bond, it would satisfy any other bonds that you are required to carry under statute, so for fifty bucks, you might be able to then not take out another finance officer bond, I've seen those be upwards of six, seven hundred dollars a year for the one office. The enhanced crime gets you all of those folks and more covered for any potential employee dishonesty, we've, we've seen a couple of those. We've had some other types of claims covered under that coverage as well, but that's kind of been the best as far as comparison, like, why would we need that for the money, if you can satisfy your finance officer bond alone with just that coverage at a fraction of the price, it's probably worth it, so. Liability, we have quoted in your packet, we've given you a couple options for quotes, but right now, your per occurrence limit is five million dollars. So we've, we've included that in your packet, and we'll talk about that in a second. Your current commercial coverage has what's called an aggregate limit also, and what an aggregate limit is is it's the commercial carrier's way of saying, this is the most we're gonna pay in your claims in any one policy period, so. Your per occurrence limit, your underlying is one million in your current coverage with a two million dollar aggregate. So they're saying on your general liability policy, the most they're gonna pay in any one coverage here is two million dollars, regardless of the number of claims you have. For us, and then you have an umbrella on top of that to then get you to a five million dollar per occurrence. But the umbrella still requires you to have a million dollars either in coverage, or that's a deductible before that umbrella picks up, so it gets, sometimes that gets a little tricky. Hopefully, you never in your whole entire lives have to even understand or know what that's about, because you never have a claim that is that big. But it's just something that if you did, there's two policies that actually come into play under your current coverage. We don't do that, if you want five million dollars per occurrence, which is what you've currently got in theory, we've quoted it. So you have five million dollars per occurrence for every claim that you have, because we don't have aggregate limits for our members. So hopefully, you never have any five million dollar claims, but if you happen to have two or three, our loss controls, loss control folks are gonna come and have a chat with you about, hey, what's going on, but coverage-wise, you would be fine. Okay, so those are just kind of some of the differences. The other thing that isn't in this slide, but I do wanna point out is we have cyber liability coverage built in to our general liability line, so every member who has general liability coverage with the S D P A automatically has half a million dollars in cyber coverage with a fifteen thousand dollar deductible. Right now, you guys have a separate policy for a million dollars and a ten thousand dollar deductible, so what I've done is, we've only included our quote to have the included cyber, but if you do want a million dollars in coverage, then we have, I've got in Don's folder a cyber application form. Because what we would do is, we would just purchase an excess cyber policy, or we would quote that, and then you guys could purchase that to get that full million dollars, if that's what you felt that you wanted. So that would just be additional and above, and I don't have a quote for that, because the application, we'd have to have you fill that out to qualify for that extra coverage. But again, we've got that half a million already built in there, so to see what the difference would be, if that's something that you guys would want, we can do that, and we're happy to do that. All right, um, let's talk numbers, so. This packet has all of the numbers. We've quoted, I gave you a quote for one, two, three, four, and five million, so for our coverage, for coverage beginning October first, which is your renewal date, for the five million dollars per occurrence for your governmental liability, so we cover all of our, our liability exposures in months, so all of your general liabilities, so that'd be like your slip, trip, and falls, sewer backup, things like that, drainage, like, hey, your drainage is bad, I got water in my basement, those types of things. Those are under the general liability line, we also include your officials' liability, so if someone has beef with the council, or if there's a termination, things like that, all of those types of claims all under that general liability line, so. Ten thousand for eleven eighty-three for the five million, we've got some other quotes in there. The summary page, I think it's towards the back of that packet, will give you the different numbers for each of those. Auto liability is quoted there, we've quoted your property, the best that it is quoted or what you currently have, so we've given you the closest apples-to-apples comparison that we could get. Equipment breakdown, you do have some lift stations in your schedule, so we quoted those. The equipment breakdown coverage also gets, if you have any boilers, it would pick up your boiler inspections, you just have to email travelers and be like, hey, we have a boiler that's due, and they send somebody out to do that inspection for you. But the claims that we have seen on the equipment breakdown coverage, honestly, are lift stations. So if something gets up into that lift station and suddenly it's broken, it's usually a rag, or somebody. I'm not sure how people get diapers down the toilet, but we've seen it, like, how do you even, like, how does it get, but anyway. So if something gets in there, there's a sudden and accidental breakdown to that pump, then we can get that pump claim picked up through that equipment breakdown coverage, so that's kind of the most common claim that I've seen come through that equipment breakdown coverage. In the packet, you've got some tables that show you what the cost is per location for your buildings and your contents. We've quoted those all at replacement cost coverage with the thousand dollar deductible, and that's all peril, so wind, hail, fire, water, you know, whatever that may be, the one thing that I wasn't sure about was you have a excess flood coverage for a building, and I'm not sure if that it says that that coverage is excess over your flood insurance, so I'm assuming that structure might be in a flood zone. So we wouldn't be able to get you flood, flood coverage for that. So we wouldn't be able to get you flood, flood coverage for that, but we do have flood, we have flood coverage included in our property form with a ten thousand dollar deductible, so. So is it in a flood zone? Okay, sure, so if it's, if there were sewer backup, we would catch that, but not necessarily a flood.
Is it, is it that or is it your, the west shop?
It could be the list.
Just because it sits right, right on the creek.
So that would be the only thing that, and it says it sits over your flood insurance, so the flood insurance has to pay first and then it's a very limited amount for the access coverage. So if that's something that we need to look at further, we can take a look at possibly getting again another little standalone because our coverage excludes any property in flood zones A or B because there's flood insurance program for that. But if that's something that you guys needed, we take a look and, and find a solution for that also if you worried about, you know, anything above what flood insurance might. And I saw that seemed like it was a pretty recent change or addition, so I'm not sure if there was a claim that prompted that or what prompted that change. Um, cause it looked like it was just added fairly recently. No, and that would be picked up under the regular property policy, so yeah, I'm not, I'm not. But I wanted to point that out because that would be something that is different and, and you know, certainly would need to know. You can take this information home with you, there's some, um, if you have any questions, you've got my, um, you've got Becky's information and she can get you to me and, and I can leave some cards too. Um, but either one of us would be happy to chat with you and my information is on the org chart. Um, so if you did decide that you wanted to come to the pool, um, what we would do, we would just need to know probably by midday on September thirtieth, just so we can let all of our carriers know because your coverage technically starts at midnight. And rather than scrambling to be like, oh, hey, by the way, they're starting like today, um, we'd like to be able to just give them the heads up that, yep, these guys are on board, we're happy to have them. Um, because like you, we purchase reinsurance to protect the assets of the pool. So we have a, a deductible amount that we know that we're comfortable and can, can take care of. And so we just need to let our other partners know that, um, you guys are on board and, and we would be happy to have you. Do you have questions? I could talk about this stuff all night, but I know you've got a full agenda and you're like, listen lady, like this is not our gym, but it is mine, so.
Oh, you give a good presentation, so.
Yeah.
Almost recommended, you guys were recommended by Tobias from Corus.
Oh, sure, yep, Tobias, yeah, yep, we've worked with Tobias for many, many years, yes. Perfect, well, if there's something that as you're talking about it, as you're looking through stuff, if you've got any questions, please reach out. Um, comments, concerns, let us know, we are happy to help, we would be excited to um be your partner for property liability coverage. Um, I think from what I could tell, I, I feel like the pricing is there, it's just a matter of if everything else lines up. If you think that we, we checked all your boxes, um, again, happy to be a partner with you, but we'll also understand if, if we'd have to come back next year and try again, because now that you're on our radar, you might see us more than. Wait a minute, so, yes, thank you so much for your time, thank you guys too for what you do. Cause um, I don't, I, I saw a line forming, people wanting to come in also to thank you for all you do. Um, you know, we recognize that it's not every day that people thank you for your sacrifice and stuff like that, yeah. Yes, no, but thank you again so much for everything and for even just the opportunity to share what we have with you guys, so.
Thank you very much for coming.
Well, have a nice evening.
Yes, we will circle back on this. Um, Wes, we'll let you kind of keep going.
It's gonna, it's gonna take a while.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, pretty quick, Monty Cooper here with the fire department. We had about uh five EMS runs last month, three trainings, we covered a football game at Tri Valley School and uh one fire. Any questions for us, turn in some budgetary numbers to Don earlier and I'll complete budget filled out.
Nope.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate you guys.
Well, I figured you'd stick around anyways, but that gave you the opportunity to leave.
Okay, now we'll move on to you, Wes, we'll let you get out of here.
Okay, Trevor, if it, if it's okay with you all running the engineering report?
Yes.
And then we'd like to share a presentation on the wastewater facility plan.
Absolutely.
And so all, starting out, you know, we'll go from generally top to bottom. On the general engineering side, um, I've just got some notes in here, I'm going to hit some of the high points, the infrastructure improvements plan. Um, I haven't made a lot of traction on that and since some of that is, you know, developing some of the wastewater alternatives, that's going to help with, with that implementation plan. Um, so I've got um some work to do on that and the, the plan would be next month to have some information for the council to review. And really what we'd be looking at is from the primary meeting that we did have, the kickoff meeting, there was a long list of items that, you know, obviously need to be improved, um, but can't be improved over the next five years. I mean, it's just, it can be too costly to do that, so trying to pare down that list to something that can fit within a five-year plan. So that, that's my plan next month is get that together, present that and then ask the council to give me a little bit more direction on what do we want to pursue, what's the highest priority items. The, the next item I have on here is the slurry seal. So a contractor did complete the slurry seal work in August and we had kind of mentioned that at the, at the last meeting. But I don't know if they've sent in a request for payment yet, Don, have they sent anything your way? Okay. If, if they do, I would imagine that they would send it for the, they would invoice you for the full amount. But it's something that when you get that to send, I think Jared and I, it'd be good if we looked at it just to verify quantities.
I have a question.
Yes.
And that is, when you did the slurry seal, how many places were there bought this far from the curb? Uh, down, ruts, whatever, that, the concrete or the asphalt wasn't all the way to the curb? Are we just going over that and camouflaging it? Or are, are we going to get, the next time we have this, I'm going to be an advocate of getting those fixed before you do the slurry seal. That's my thoughts.
No, I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
Can we talk about that at last meeting?
Yeah, I think we did.
Instead of hopscotching all through town, the blocks that we're going to slurry seal, we're actually going to try and grind out next to the curb and ones need to, so.
And of course, that depends on the severity, I mean, some of those areas, you're, we're going to be able to do a patch. But if we start getting into some roadways where it's going to take the entire edge mill or even two passes as we get out into the driving lane, then we got to start considering, is that a roadway that we schedule for replacement?
Well, Matt and I talked a little bit about this and I think there's a way that you can take, cut out like a two-foot piece.
There, I mean, there is, I mean.
And maybe it's too expensive, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I've, I for one think that that should be fixed before you do any more slurry seal because you're putting a Band-Aid on something which I don't think is right. That's my opinion, I mean, that's the way I look at it.
I think, I, yeah, I share that same thought and I, and we've, and we've had the conversation. And it, yeah, at the end of the day, it comes down to what, what's in the budget. And so is some of the budget for the slurry seal, does that need to go into some repairs? And then the slurry seal work gets pared down, but that.
But are we pretty much down to the minimums on quantities for the slurry seal per project?
Split up, so that is at the minimum, so we can't go any lower with that. We would have to just find more money in the budget for asphalt repairs.
That's a big thing, I mean, it's just cost of everything that's killing us.
But I'll, I'll note that, I think that's something great that we can talk about in that infrastructure improvements plan. Just like, if I, okay, what are some of these street improvements that can be made ahead of the surface treatment? I don't, I don't have this item on here, but Jared and I have been working on this on Sixth Street Drainage, so this would be a six and Charles. There's a culvert that's failing, um, it'd be Charles going to the ready-mix plant from the south. And it's a, it's an area that's been an issue for a while. We do have a plan to make, to make an improvement there and we've talked to Jared about that. Trying to then identify, trying to identify um a way to get our, or get a proposal from a contractor to do that work. We've tried a couple of times to, to look at some other alternatives, um, that have kind of moved into this alternative of actually taking out the culvert, putting in a valley gutter across that, um, across that roadway intersection and trying to get the drainage through there. So that way we can just improve that intersection, so that way things perform or they're adequate for the traffic that it sees. And I, our plan is to send that, send that RFP out to a contractor here, um, you know, as, as soon as this week, when we have it prepared. But there will be then something to consider as far as a proposal from a contractor to then accept if we ought to do any work yet this fall.
And then is that going to run east and west or north and south?
They're on east and west.
East and west, right there at the ready-mix.
Yeah, kind of parallel Sixth Street.
Yep. Is it all concrete right now?
Uh, the street, no, it's just asphalt. Put a valley gutter kind of right on the edge of the road there.
Okay.
Where you turn onto Charles off of Sixth Street.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure if, I couldn't remember if going north, if it turned a little bit of concrete, if concrete butted up to it, I couldn't remember.
Going north, just gravel.
There's a culvert there now, isn't there?
Yeah.
Wind salt or something.
We want to just remove that culvert completely and put a valley gutter across, just get the gravel water to go across. From the west side to the east side into that drainage box or river.
Yep. Makes sense.
We will have to regrade that gravel roadway to, to get the drainage down to that again.
You'd have to lower it.
Where, where does that drainage box go?
South.
So. Okay.
We won't add any more water though, you know, that, there's going to be no additional water.
It all flows out anyway, right?
Yeah, eventually, yeah.
Um, I know it was brought up at, at my work, they make, I don't know, it's like a screen that you can drop in those inlets. Would that be something to consider there to keep out some of the gravel? Cause I think we're going to a valley gutter, I think you're going to get quite a bit that's going to wash down into that box. I mean, is that something to consider? Cause otherwise that gravel is going to end up out in yards.
Probably already enough gravel in that box to begin with.
Probably.
Yeah, it's full right now, it'd be cleaned up. Thing about screens is it, the concept is great, but it's something you have to maintain all the time. And if you let it get plugged up and we get a three-inch rain now, the water can't get in there at all. Now you have flooding. Or say this winter it freezes, gets backed up with ice, you have ice jam, I, I don't know.
When was the last time that's been cleaned up ever?
Uh, it's been a couple of years. We brought in, uh, Robert Ritter.
Might just be a thing that we schedule every couple of years to do then? Something happened? Okay.
I'm going to move on to the, so the Fourth Street Utility Project here. Um, we'll, we'll start off with the current project that's being completed on Sherman Fort. And we've, right now they, they finished the utility installation, so they finished that last Friday. So utilities in, they're, they're having some difficulties rebuilding the roadway. And they're really having some difficulties with compacting the trench. So they initially put the material back in the trench when Geotech came out to test, so the tests weren't passing, they didn't meet compaction. Um, part of the reason for that was, was over moisture, pretty wet material. There's been some of the material that's been replaced at the intersection of Charles and Fourth, that material was replaced with some granular fill material. You know, we can't, um, we're trying to avoid bringing in granular gravel all the way up to the surface. And the reason is, we're going to do likely cement treatment on the roadway on Fourth. So the same treatment that we've done on Main and First and Second and these other roads. We need to have a clay cap to do that, if we're good at granular material, the cement treatment doesn't work as well, we can't use the conventional process with that. So right now, we're going to call Geotech tomorrow morning, ask Geotech to come out and take a look at the soil and let us know if it can be dried down and if it's going to be adequate to be put back in the trench. If it's not, we're going to have to try to salvage all the material that can be salvaged and reused. Material that can't be or that's not suitable to go back in the trench, that's going to have to be hauled off. And we will have to import new material into the trench. So we had anticipated there would be some import on the project, but not the entire trench length. So I don't, I don't know what that scope is.
I have a question and that is, how come they went curb to the middle of the street and dug down four to five feet? When the trench only needed to be like five or six foot wide to put the sewer line in? How come they went so deep and how come they went so wide?
So they.
I mean, it doesn't make sense, I've been the digging business myself. I wouldn't want to go from here to here and go down six feet. I have a trench and I go a trench like four feet wide for safety reasons. Why, why go twenty feet or twenty-five feet? It doesn't make sense, that's my reasoning.
The, the minimum generally we can take for surfacing is, is twelve feet. Twelve, I mean, that's, that's been our standard is a twelve-foot width on the, on the surface.
Well, you've got it, twenty-five feet.
And that, and that goes all the way to the, you know, to the lip of the curb. Now, part of that, they, they have some services that they're going to cut over. The, the part of that, they're likely going to damage some of that asphalt as well. So I, I understand the, the reason to try to narrow that up as much as possible and that was the intent. But they still do need to have an adequate amount to put in the sewer. Does any, the sewer, how deep's the sewer right there, here, I don't know, it's probably like ten, is it that deep?
How deep was it?
Probably fifteen feet.
You still have a trench box for the safety reasons for the, my people putting it in. But you don't have to go ten foot that way and ten foot this way.
They didn't dig, I don't think they, the whole width they had was fifteen feet deep. It took a little bit off the top.
It's wide, take a look at it now, it's wide.
Well, now it is because they're trying to get compaction, the road is just like a sponge. So they dug that all out and threw it out to let the sun hit the dirt, they're trying to dry that dirt out so they can get it stiff. But when they first, when they put the pipe in, they only had just the width of a trench box. So I think what they're doing now is, is we're trying to get this road to a carry weight, so they had to farm all that dirt out to try and get it dried out a little bit. I think that's, it's probably why it's as wide it is right now, is because of that, I'm guessing. Trying to get some stability back in that road. It's an ongoing issue in Colton, the soils here are just piss ports, say the least. Anytime you touch a road, it's just hard to get compaction.
Most of the tunnels is a sloop.
Yeah, yeah, so we've been dealing with that on every project we've done. So we'll, we'll find out what Geotech has to say and ask for a recommendation from them. Of course, we want to try to salvage as much material as possible, it's going to cost a lot of money if we need to start hauling in a bunch of, you know, fill material and import material. We will have to talk about temporary surfacing over top of this, you know, area where they've removed the pavement. And the options, you know, that we had in the plan were gravel servicing. And that was with the intent that we're likely going to be doing the Fourth Street project this year. Well, since that project didn't move forward, now the discussion is, does that stay gravel over winter? Or do we want to do something, do you want to do an alternative to provide a temporary surfacing? I did talk to D A and R, D A and R will not pay for temporary surfacing, they'll only pay for the final surface. And so if, if we do decide to put temporary surfacing down, it won't be able to be covered under the loan. I say D A and R won't pay for it, the city's still paying for it, it's under the loan, they won't allow it to be. They won't allow it to be covered under the loan. Now, some options that, sorry, what?
No, I was, I thought we already talked about this here, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, we did, but.
We decided to.
But we were gonna, it was gonna get covered under our loan, so now we're gonna have to come out of pocket.
For the finished surface? Cause that was the idea was that.
For the temp surface on Fourth. We're still doing the finished surface on.
On Sherman.
On Sherman.
And, and they'll allow the finished surface on Sherman. You know, in that discussion, um, there, we have two options, we either bid that separately. Or we ask for a price from Underground Connections. They hire the asphalt contractor to do the work and, you know, that's, that's how the work we get completed. And, and that's likely the easiest route is have Underground Connections hire a sub to put the asphalt in.
The street going on Sherman, that's okay.
On Sherman, yep.
It's dry enough that they can get it packed in or they're having problems too.
They'll, they'll still have to meet their compaction there, so they still are having some issues with that trench as well. But that's.
When, just a, just a FYI, when we put the water main through on Sherman, we had to dig down and put a bunch of rock and fabric. And, cause we couldn't make compactions there either when we did that, so. So it, it doesn't shock us at all that they're having issues trying to get compaction in that trench. On the other side of the street, we had the same issue just what, two years ago? Three years ago when we did that?
Yeah, well, that was.
Was that all?
Yeah, that was in twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Time flies when you have fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we were in agreement that we, I guess, do we feel comfortable with asking Underground Connections? To give a surprise from a contractor underneath of them? In lieu of trying to bid that out as a separate project? The, the benefits would be is that it's, it's still underneath Underground Connections. If there's any issue with the work done itself, then we have one general that we're working with. We don't have an underground contractor pointing at the surfacing contractor and saying, well, it's their fault.
Or we just put enough of the crown on Fourth Street and then do the dust control?
We're just talking about Sherman right now.
Oh, you're talking about the asphalt portion. Right, okay.
So if you look at what we're gonna do next year, it's almost imperative that we asphalt that Sherman. Cause we're gonna need that road next year for parking.
Yeah.
For the bar, for the post office, Fourth Street will be, all summer will be blocked off.
Cause, because if, if I remember right, that initial quote was to do Sherman and Fourth, just a two inch temporary.
Yep.
And that was only twenty feet wide, so it's gonna be, and now it's gonna be wider than that, so that's gonna add more to that.
Yeah.
Initial quote.
I mean, I think it's imperative that we have to do Sherman.
Well, I mean, I don't know why you'd waste your money on a temp surface just to tear it out.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, and then we need that for parking downtown anyways. So, I mean, I, my recommendations is just have them go get a, bid underneath them and we deal with one contractor.
Yeah.
And it's all umbrella done under them.
If, if they're willing to do that.
And have we had a discussion with them yet?
Uh, we did at the pre-con and they, they seemed open to it, so I don't.
Okay.
See a reason why they wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be accommodating to us.
So then do we need to figure then for this project next year, whether it's gonna be a lot more money if you're having this much trouble down here trying to compact it? That we're gonna have this much more problem doing this whole block and?
There, there may be some more trench replacement. The subgrade itself, um, we're planning to do a cement treatment on the subgrade. And that's been pretty successful in other areas town. So I think that would still be a good, a good method to do on this stretch of roadway. But yeah, the, the trench replacement, we have to consider that.
And it, it will help too on the water, we won't be as deep. So that'll help a little bit, but we're still gonna have probably maybe some potential to have some material that we're not gonna wanna use.
On, on Fourth Street? So then we need to make the decision on, are we okay with gravel surfacing? Or do we think that we need a temporary asphalt mat? Again, the temporary asphalt mat can't be covered underneath the loan. So I did ask D A and R about a dust control, so putting down a chloride or, or another chemical for dust control. And they would, they, they would allow that to be under the loan.
What about like a water seal? Essentially chip sealing the gravel. I mean, it'll keep the water out. It'd help a little bit, I mean, you'd still have to be careful with the plow and stuff, but.
Different than gravel?
What's that?
No different than.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'd be a little bit more resistant than gravel, but it's, it's at least keeping the water out. It's, you know, making a somewhat permanent, you're a temporary, I mean, really. So I, you know, I don't know if any of you guys have gone north of Madison on eighty-one? That is what the water seal is. Yep, they basically just shaped the road, sprayed a tack, and I think they sand treated that one or like a fine, fine gravel.
That's not too bad, I just drove on it yesterday.
I mean, I mean, it potholes and stuff, but it's gonna be a lot better than just plain gravel and it might be quite a bit cheaper than asphalt.
I'm thinking about it again, that's got a lot more traffic than this is gonna have on it, but yeah.
Maybe that's a, that's a cost comparison on that too.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I don't know what cost comparison is, but.
I don't know, I suppose your biggest cost is gonna be somebody just mobilizing to do it.
Yeah.
Do the work. If you're, I mean, we're just saying, so they, they did like a sand seal on that or not, it was something heavier than sand?
It was a little heavier than sand, I mean, it almost like, smaller than chip, but heavier than sand. Um, you know, and that's, I mean, it looks to be, you know, about a quarter inch, half inch thick, but, you know, at least it's gonna keep the moisture out of the ground.
If you spray that with chloride, well, that kinda, like, when they did that gravel road out here, that got really hard. With that, kinda seal that top of that gravel, let the moisture just kinda repel off?
I, I, I don't know too much about spraying with chloride, we don't.
Well, we gotta see if that's even covering under that loan too, or it's gonna be out of pocket with that water seal.
The, yeah, so the chip seal, I don't know if it would be. I do know that the dust control is.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess. I mean, just, I mean, doesn't hurt to check into it, but I think at the end of the day. I think my perspective is we just shape that road with gravel and. Seal, you know, put dust control on it.
Sprayed a few times with dust control, it'll.
We put that, um, calcium chloride down our parking lot all the time.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be different if fluoride in this project, cause another two years out, I mean.
Yeah.
We're gonna literally get into it the next following year. We've just gotta get through winter.
Gotta make it through one winter, yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking the reason why that dirt road got so hard is cause the amount of traffic. That's it grinded in where we won't have that, I think it'll stay fairly loose. Where, you know, if you, you know, and I'm not saying we should, cause I don't know what cost is. I'm just throwing another option out to keep the moisture out of it.
Is that something that you would, you may go entertain, question?
Yeah, we, I, I don't think D A and R will pay for it. Um, just the discussion I had, cause I did talk to Andy Rules. And he is the director for D A, D A and R in this program. And he, he said, well, we'll not do anything with temporary surfacing, and I think he would consider that a temporary surfacing. Now, cost wise on the chip seal, it, it probably is somewhere around like four dollars a square yard, let's say, and then whatever mobilization cost.
Well, if, I'm just thinking whoever these guys use for the paving, they're gonna have most of that equipment here. You know, well, they'll have the tack truck and they'll, you know, they'll have to get whatever spreads to chips, but.
That's a good distributor, but they'll have. They'll have a roller here.
Yeah.
And they could bring a nine wheel.
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think of the best way to give us a somewhat firmer surface over the winter.
Can we just tell Underground Connections to put that as a line item, light item? Bid item that they do that, and then we can see.
Yeah, just.
And it's kind of gonna be based off what Geotech says, why, I mean, cause I know that's not the surface, but there could be a good bit of expense.
Yeah, so then at the end of the day, we can just retract that if we don't wanna use it and we just go back to it? I mean, I think at the end of the day, we're all in agreeance, so we can just have to gravel it and dust control it.
I think dust control for sure.
Yes.
You know, I, I'll ask them to provide a price for chip seal. Was there anything else that we needed to cover with Sherman Fort here?
No, I don't think on that, no.
Good, um, the other item we have on here, so Fourth Street design, we did, we did send that sixty percent plan to DOT. DOT, they reviewed them, sent them back to Banner. So we reviewed their comments and now we're working towards our ninety percent. Once we get closer to ninety percent, I'd like to come in and just present the final plan to the council. And what, what DOT had for comments, um, there were, there wasn't a lot of comments really on the formatting of the plans. There was a couple of items that they commented on regarding this, uh, cross crossing here by the, um, insurance agency. Across the street across Fourth. We've taken that out just because we couldn't get the grades to work with the steps in the right of way. The other comment they did have, and this is something that we'll have to address. Jared, I haven't addressed this with you yet, but they did state that they're gonna require the concrete in the alcoves to be replaced if it's not ADA compliant. We, we were operating underneath some understanding that they may not require that to be replaced since it's outside the right of way. But they are gonna ask that every, every business has ADA access at some point. So if they don't have it off of Main, or sorry, off of Fourth, then they'll have to have it at some other point. Um, or some other entrance to the building. The city hall is, is fine, cause ADA's from the back. But some of the other buildings, their alcoves are not gonna be ADA compliant.
I think this one's gonna be corner insurance over there?
Uh, I think we can get a variance for corner insurance.
Okay.
Just by the nature of, we've talked about that from day one with DOT. But there are, there are some other ones, I, I think even sign design, I don't know if they're.
Yeah, they gotta come up a little bit.
Yeah.
Burning store has to come up.
They're on the gym.
The gym.
Yep. So there's, there's a handful of them that we're gonna have to sit down and figure out how we're gonna make things ADA compliant on sidewalk. And that may require a ramp in some locations. And then, oh, I will cover, um, the, I guess this would be the last one on the sheet and then we'll kind of hop back to the facility plan. So the phase four and five, Storm Show Improvement, this is the project that Alliance has completed for the city. They had sent an email on Friday saying they were completed with all the punch list work. We did, we did walk through the punch list on Friday. I didn't, Spencer Gilf did, he was up here doing the RPR work on the project. But he had a, what, six or seven items that weren't completed yet. So I sent that back to Alliance and, um, there's still many good questions to get answered.
What items did we have on there?
Uh, was spraying the weeds.
Seeding, grain.
Those, some cracks I need sealed.
That was gonna be my, I mean, pretty much wherever they put all that dirt down. To me, that, a lot of that has to be sprayed, you know, I mean, a lot of that's weed. And they, if they would've got on top of it right away, I think they would've had a fighting chance, now they let you let weed take over so much. I guess that's my, my thought on it. Up at the park and, I mean, if you go down that whole part that we replaced, that the elevator to, um, Dollar General. I mean, you can barely see any grass, that's, I mean, that's mainly all weeds now.
Yeah, that, that area is primarily the weeds.
And I don't think that should fall on those property owners at this rate, actually wasn't like that prior.
And they've, and they are responsible to go out and, and do the weed control, and that's, that's part of the spec. Is they, they have to go out and spray, I mean, however many applications they can pull the weed until they can get vegetation established.
So what are we gonna do about?
Um. So that seeding window is till September fifteenth. So they'd have to get somebody out there to do the seeding right away. In, in that, I mean, that date is kind of a generalization of a date. If we've got good weather, I mean, normally that can get extended throughout the end of September as well.
So they can spray weed to seed at the same time?
A lot, a lot of the chemicals that they use, they can spray and plant three days later.
Okay.
And then I did send an email to, um, Iowa and Fifth. I did send an email out to just this afternoon, um, out to Mid American again. Cause there, there was, they did have an individual that was coming out to look at, coming out to the site to look at the, you know, what had been done with the gas repair location. And she was actually gonna meet with Jared, but she never, she never did contact him. Follow up on that, I mean, just seems like things are kind of lagging with, with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I did, um, I did tell Alliance that I had some time on Wednesday or Thursday to, to go through the remaining items. I believe that was it with phase four and five. We're waiting for a long evening here. Okay, so on the, on the presentation, we, we wanna, wanna give as, as much information as we can on the presentation. But we are gonna try to keep it fairly high level, fairly brief. If there's, if there's no other questions on the engineer's report, Michael and I'll begin the presentation if you're good with that.
Yeah.
This is a presentation on the wastewater system facility plan. So the, the city had hired Banner Associates to, to conduct this study. And this study was to develop some information, so that way the city could look at that and make some decisions moving forward. On just future improvements for the wastewater facilities. Presenting that, I think we got mostly introductions that way, but I'm Weston Blazius. And presenting with me is gonna be, we'll have Mike introduce himself.
Sure, uh, Michael Luthold, I'm with the wastewater, I'm with the wastewater department, uh, yeah, Weston's. We're on the civil side of things, so happy, happy to do this, so.
Kind of backing up to the reason for the study, like I said, you know, get some information on the facilities, look at the condition of the facilities. Identify where the deficiencies are, come up with alternatives, and then recommend some improvements that, that could be made to the system to improve functionality. Um, and then ultimately look at price, look at implementation scheduling, you know, how far out should we be thinking about making these improvements? And, you know, how does that fit into the city's budget and the, and the city's goals ultimately? This, this facility plan is funded by a small community planning grant. So the, the city applied for a small community planning grant and they're providing, I believe it's twelve thousand dollars, so that's due to the state, they're providing twelve thousand dollars. And then the city also received a grant from East Dakota Water District. And that was in the amount of eighteen thousand, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. Don, I don't know if they've reached out to you at all regarding East Dakota Water District, Water District hasn't, okay? So it's, it's partially financed by them as well. And then the remainder of that comes from the city of Colton local funds. So it's, it's partially financed by them as well. And then the remainder of that comes from the city of Colton local funds. The systems that we evaluated, so as part of the small community planning grant, this does have to be a comprehensive study. And that means it needs to include everything that you have for wastewater facilities. So it includes the collection system, the lift station, which the city only has one lift station, and then your wastewater treatment facility. And I'm gonna cover the collection system, Michael, he's gonna cover the technical parts of the lift station and the wastewater treatment facility. So this is a table showing what your wastewater system comprises of. It's generally PVC, the VCP is clay pipe. So that's been the pipe that we've been trying to eradicate out of the system. And then CIPP is cast in place pipe. And that's been the rehab that's been taking place over the last couple of years. I guess it's been a few years back. But that's a, a liner that's put inside the clay pipe. And it's a rehab processor method that extends the life of that system. Saying that it's somewhere between fifty, maybe seventy-five years is what you can expect for that. So you can see the city has, the city of Colton has thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five feet of sanitary sewer main that, that you have to, that you have to operate and maintain. And of that, just due to the recent projects that you've done over the past six years, seventy-five percent of that is, um, is PVC. PVC or rehabed clay pipe. This is just a figure of an, of an updated collection map. So you have one on the wall and we'll have to replace that one that's, that's on the wall with the updates that were made. So as part of these updates, we've been updating it, you know, throughout the years, but the last update was after the main and first project. Um, so now we've gotten Glen included in that. We're gonna have the sewer that's on Sherman and Fourth, including that on Second. And then of course, all the CIPP improvements that have been made. At the beginning of this, of this study, um, we, we did sit down, had a kickoff meeting with the city staff. And had looked at, okay, what, what are the conditions of the system right now? Where are some of the known issues? What are some of the priorities that we see that need to be evaluated? And we came up with a, with a map of areas, you know, that were primarily clay. So this is all the clay piping that's left in the system. So we know that that's all we need to target, is target, you know, getting, getting rid of the clay, rehabbing it or doing replacements. And with that, we came up with a phasing plan. And in this, I mean, there, there is some order of priority, you know, phase one is likely a higher priority than, than phase five. Although, you know, phase five is the CIPP portion, that's something that we feel like can be done when, you know, the city feels like it's appropriate for that to be done. It's, it's not tied specifically to a street improvement or a water replacement. So phase one, this would be on Sixth Street. So this is sanitary sewer main replacement on Sixth Street between Main Avenue and Sherman Avenue. We, we have tried to fund a, a project on Sixth Street. Now it's through the community access grant. Now we haven't been successful in funding that. But we do know that that's, that street does need some improvements. And that's what prompted the need to look at the sanitary as well. If we're gonna make street improvements in that area, um, we recommend of course replacing the utilities as well. So in this, in this case, that would be a, a priority if we were to pursue a project on Sixth Street. And we've broken that out into some estimated costs with an opinion of cost just on the, on the clean water, and I'll explain that. Clean water is the sanitary, drinking water is the water utility. So how the state does their funding, they either have clean water funds or drinking water funds. If we're gonna do storm sewer or sanitary sewer, you'll use clean water funds. If you're going to do, you'll use a, or do a water utility, then you'll be using water funds. So I, we broke that up. So phase this portion of work would cost about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for just the sanitary. If we were to add the water and that other half of the street scope into it, it's about one point four million dollars. And the, and these are conservative estimates, I put it that. Part of the reason why this would be a little more expensive is we did, um, anticipate that it would be concrete from the ready mixed plant at Charles going out to Main Avenue. And as part of this, this can be a discussion, just while if you have questions throughout, you know, if I don't bring that up and we can address it. There'll be an opportunity for questions at the end as well. Phase two, this is right behind City Hall, so the alleyway, um, between Sherman and Dakota. And that would be this segment of sewer between Sherman and Dakota. Most of the southeastern part of town goes through this segment of sewer. So it is a pretty high volume segment. And of course, that's the bypass that we're making right now. Going up north to Fourth Street and then over connecting at Charles. Another part of this project would be the water. So there's a two inch water service that connects the bar and, you know, the bar, City Hall. Couple items on the other connections are in here.
My place.
Apartment, building, the backside of that, shop.
And, and there's been, and there's been some issues with that water line as well. Been a couple breaks and all that. And it is a two inch line, it's a dead end line as well. What we're proposing here is the, the sewer portion would be about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And the alley is, is gonna be likely littered with utilities. So it, and it's, and it's gonna be pretty tight for, for working quarters. So it's gonna have to be some other considerations there as well. But if we do add in the water, um, that project costs climbs to about a half million dollars. And part of the reason for the half million is we are planning to, an option to loop the water line. So either loop the water line south to Fifth Street, and, and that's likely what we would do. It's either that or put a dead end line in with a hydrant at the end. In this case, we're, we're calling out for a loop, whether we go south to Fifth Street or north to Fourth, there'll have to be a determination made by the city. Phase three, this is in the area where we did storm sewer improvements on this most recent project. So in that, in that area, this is clay, um, sanitary sewer piping. And also there's cast iron water main. So we, we'd recommend replacing both utilities if you're going to do the work. Now, there's been some partial street reconstruction as part of the storm sewer project. And so those areas where we've done partial street reconstruction, we would then put the new utilities on the other side of the street. And then that would be reconstructed, that other side of the street. And so we're showing here approximate cost, you know, the clean water, eight hundred and twenty thousand to do everything. And again, there'll be some savings with some of that partial street reconstruction. We didn't include that in here, the savings. But if you were to do the full width reconstruction, it'd be about one point seven.
So is the life out of the pipe already, basically?
On the clay?
Yeah.
No, it's not. The, the clay pipe is not in critical condition. There's some areas that need some maintenance. Whether it's, you know, joints that are offset, whether it's cracks in the pipe, there's some sags in areas. But nothing that, you know, everything that needed immediate attention had been primarily addressed with that CIPP project.
But you would never line that or that's not an option?
You, you could line this, you could line that. The, the only thought is if you, um, if you're gonna replace water and you're gonna do a street improvement, the, the lining cost itself, like we kind of talked with, um, the past project, the mains aren't that expensive to line, um, relatively. But when you start doing services, that's when you have to mobilize specialized equipment to do service lining. And that's when you start getting larger costs. Cause it, it is each service, just to do a short liner on it is about six thousand dollars. And if you wanna extend that out to the right of way, which you could do if you're, you know, doing open cut when you have the street tore up. I mean, you can do that for much less. You can do that for, you know, half or two thirds of the cost.
We were involved with a project like that today, only they lined it with the plastic. Ben and I, Colin, I came in and did it. And it will, you can start with three inch up to ten inch. And they can go in there and they blew it up in there. And it was the darkest project, but it's cost a hundred and fifty dollars a foot to do it. That's expensive.
I think to answer your question, Julia, if the water main wasn't orange cast right there, we would, we'd just run a liner in that, in that sewer pipe. But being that right next to it, there's the old cast iron, orange pipe, it, it makes sense to open trench and just do both of them while you're there.
Because potentially you could have a problem before the street would be replaced again?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that. That clay tile was, was put in, what, the late fifties, early sixties, something like that. So I mean, it's at the end of its lifespan. There's nothing wrong with it, other than so occasional ionized, you know, infiltration, stuff like that. Still works, but it's, it's there, you know. So you either, either line it or you replace it completely.
Yeah. The biggest issue is the cast iron pipe.
Yeah, exactly.
Water line.
That's the biggest problem. The water pressure is that, that.
Mm-hmm.
In that area.
It's terrible. And that's, that's a good point on these that, you know, we did, this isn't of course a water facility plan. But we did have information on the water. So we had to find the cost estimate, cause if you're, if you're going, if you're thinking about doing a project, we didn't, we didn't wanna present it as, well, you can do this project for eight hundred thousand. Well, that's, I mean, that's not true. You gotta do the other work associated with it. Phase four, so this would be the last of the open cut. And this is the segment of pipe from, on Fourth Street from Park going to the east cemetery drive where the future developments proposed. There's, there's been already, you know, some plans put together to replace that. How that cost gets covered, I'm unsure, but we presented the cost here. It's about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's to do the complete width of the street. And the water main, the water main underneath that street is PVC already. And that leaves us with the last phase, and that was the CIPP portion of work. And so part of that reason, um, Julie, where we called out open cut replacement on those other ones, that was because there was, you know, water in, as well, that needed to be completed in these other areas. Generally, there, a lot of these are some dead end lines that are on the east side of town. But these other ones don't have that water associated with them. And I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that, Jared. There might be some water with, with some of these still. And, and that's something that we'd have to consider as we moved into that last phase. Though it's a probably a little ways out. But before we would get to the CIPP lining on these, we'd likely recommend that you do televising. Just to, just to make sure that you don't have a line that isn't in condition to where it makes more sense just to replace it than the line. That kind of wraps up the collection system. I'll hand it over to Michael. He can talk about the main components that take the wastewater out to the treatment plant and, I don't know, my, my costs are gonna look pretty minimal compared to the stuff that Mike caused this year.
So kind of as we're, as we're moving through the system, obviously it's all, you know, it's all gonna be collected. So we're just kind of moving, moving down the train, shall we say. So everything, uh, all the sewer that gets collected goes to that main lift station. So, and looking at that, so so we're gonna look at the main lift station, we're gonna kind of look at the existing pond facility and then kind of what we have to do for upgrades in that pond facility in the future. So initially, uh, uh, looking at that main lift station. So the pumps in the wet well are well sized for, for future projected flows there. Calibrate the pumps, they're about at three hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So they're well sized to handle, um, wet weather events and take it out there without being, without being overwhelmed. There is some debris that gets, that, that settles to the bottom of that wet well. That needs to get, that needs to get cleaned out periodically. Some of the main improvements that we, looking at this, recommended, so the, it's, it's two portions of the lift station. So one's a wet well where it all comes into it. And then there's that metal can next to it that houses the pumps down in there. So that metal can has sacrificial anode bags that are attached to it. And those are at the end of their, at their useful life. So they're big blocks of magnesium that get, that get buried. So they're at the end of those, their useful life. That's crucial to uh, keep those, um, keep those in good working order. So it extends the life of that metal station. Um, the biggest thing that, that we'd recommend would be some, probably some control panel and monitoring upgrades. So that would also include getting some better flow monitoring on there. It's also get like real time data on what's, on what's, on what's happening. Get a better sense of where the peaks and valleys are and flows and correlating those to, to, to rainfall events. And just getting something that's a little bit more accurate and it's a little bit more, more consistent. So you can make some better, um, decisions moving forward. Um, right now Jared has to climb down in there and take a manual, a manual reading off the elapsed pump time meters. And then that can get, that can get correlated to whatever the, the pump's running at. That's how you get your flow. So it's a manual reading right now. With improvements, I can, that can be something that you can just look at. It's also historically logged. It's a very, very useful tool. And also, and also part of that, instead of those elapsed time meters, is actually installing a flow meter on the pipe. So you know the actual flow that's going through there. You're not just relying on how long the pumps are, how long the pumps are running. Some lower priority things that, that can be done is installing a wet well safety grading on the, on the wet well. So that's the concrete portion in the, in the lower picture. It's, it's basically just a grading that can be retrofitted, retrofitted in there helps if, you know, you'll catch yourself on if you're leaning over there or, or if you're working over it. It's just another level of safety to be working on that. And then you can see in the top portion, the, the floor of the lift station, some of the paint is, is coming off and some of the walls and, um, it's, it's not overly bad, but it can be, um, it's just good maintenance and belongs to the life of that metal lift station to, to keep that up to date. So those, summary of those improvements, vast majority would be into that control panel and monitoring upgrades. That'd be a total cost of, dude estimated around a hundred and ninety-four thousand to, to do those upgrades there on the lift station.
Is that including like the painting, the anode bags?
Yes, that's, that's comprehen, that's, each of those improvements is included in that, in that cost. I think the control panel itself. I think we had about seven, uh, for that. But that also includes design engineering, twenty percent contingencies.
So that magnetic flow meter, is that a device that you put in line or is it something you just attach to it?
So that would be something, that would be something that you would install in the actual line. So you've got the two pumps that come together right here and then a single discharge line. It could be installed in this vertical portion of the pipe.
So it's an easy fix?
Yeah, it'd be something that can, that can be installed in that, in that vertical line right there. Any other questions on this, on the lift station portion? Okay, we'll keep plugging. So moving on down the line, so we're gonna look at the, the existing wastewater facility. So Bird's Eye View, City Main Lift Station right here. This all gets pumped up to the big primary cell right here. There's an outlet structure. And then this flows by gravity down to the old cells, the secondary cells, where it gets settled out further. And then we're discharging into, into Colton Creek. So it's pressurized at this point and then it's up to the top of the hill and then it's gravity all the way to the, all the way to the bottom. So in evaluating the capacity of the, uh, of the wastewater facility, so we kind of touched on it a little bit. Calibrated the pumps, look at the elapsed time meters that, that were on there. Uh, and that kind of looking at peaks and valleys, getting averages, you know, what, what's. Uh, and that kinda, looking at peaks and valleys, getting averages, you know, what, what's, what's an average? What are we pumping at wet weather, so right now, right now, our average daily flow is about fifty-two thousand eight hundred gallons a day. So about seventy gallons per capita day, um, during wet, wet weather flows eighty-four thousand, a hundred twelve gallons per capita.
So we got that much infiltration into our sewer lines, or where's that coming from?
Yes, most of that is, most of that's associated with.
Infiltration.
With inflow and infiltration, so the, we'll kinda touch on this, but the biggest thing that you can do to extend the life. Wastewater facility is kinda go after these, uh, these collections to prevent rainwater. Stuff from getting into that system.
Do we know where these pipes are that are broke or cracked that's letting this water in, or where's this water coming from?
Well, it's, it's those, it's those other systems that, that we've identified.
It's just basically all over town, the old clay tile pipe that slept.
We're talking about doing that sewer lining.
Spread out all over, like even this tile line that goes up to the elevator that we were bypassing, there's, there's ionized ion now. When we cut into that, it would be running just a trickle the whole time.
And even in a, you know, even in a perfect system, in a perfect system, a brand new system with a brand new PVC pipe, there's always gonna be something. That, that that rainwater's gonna be able to get in, um, just with, with older systems, it's, it's just. Multiplied a little bit more.
Was this done after the lining project we did, these numbers? That did cut down quite a bit.
Yeah, these are thirty numbers here, so.
We actually, so that fifty-two thousand eight hundred, I don't have it here, I think, looking back in some historical projects, you know, it had been up in like that. At sixty thousand, um, I, I know it was at least like sixty thousand, so we have, we have seen. We have seen it kinda come down, um, like it, but it does vary, like this is, you know, this is monthly precipitation, so there's. There's peaks that happen when there's, when there's, when there's wet weather events that, that happen.
I believe the wet weather, but the wet weather was around a hundred and ten thousand. That twenty sixteen report, that wet weather was somewhere around a hundred and ten.
Yeah, we were pumping in that timeframe. Our pumps were running like twenty, twenty-three hours a day or something. We were just like. There was always one pump running.
And so having that more, having that more accurate flow data, um, like I said, that just. And having that tracked a little bit better, cause I mean, sometimes it's, sometimes maybe a couple of weeks before. You, you get a reading or whichever, but having that, that record that you can actually see it, it, it may even help. You know, just based on what the flow data was, it may just help get this a little bit more precise too. So looking ahead for, for sizing future improvements, it's, we had those per capita per day ratings, so. Well, we took a look at the, the population growth, uh, past trends and kinda plotted that out, so the twenty. Twenty twenty census, we're at seven thirty-eight and kinda based on those projections by twenty fifty. Best guess is that we're gonna be about a hundred and twenty-eight, so an increase of about ninety, about ninety people, so. It's, it's a, it's a, it's an estimate, but it's, it's consistent with the, with the trend lines. So maybe more, maybe less, that's the best estimate. So, so as you can see, as, as things keep, as things growing. Wastewater obviously grows as, grows as well. Um, so looking at the, the capacity of the wastewater system, um. There's, it's a little, it's, it's a little bit difficult to try and get it exactly. What the capacity of the, of the pond system is, and a big portion of it is what you're assuming for a seepage rate for what is. What infiltrates through the bottom of, what infiltrates through the bottom of the pond. Um, so there's, it's kind of difficult to qual- quantify, but. Have a best guess, and that's, that's presented in this range here, so this average daily capac- you've got an average daily capacity, and then you've got an average wet weather capacity, so. So during dry weather, we'll just, we'll just call it dry weather and wet weather, so average daily, we're anywhere from ninety. Ninety-three thousand to a hundred and one thousand gallons per day, and then during wet weather, we're about a hundred and eighteen thousand to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Gallons per day, so if you transfer this over, you know, really well set up. Um, for average, for average flows, you know, we've got a ninety-three thousand capacity. We're estimating average wet weather in twenty fifty of eighty-two thousand, so we're good on the, good during dry weather. During, during wet weather, you know, we're anywhere from a hundred and eighteen thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, if we're being conservative. We might exceed that a hundred and eighteen thousand by around twenty thirty, you know, if you push it out by a hundred and twenty-seven. Maybe twenty forty, so five to fifteen years is kinda where we're looking at. Maybe we're getting hydraulically overloaded during those.
And then numbers will look better too if we do another project, you know, replace some pipe or maybe a lining project, you know, that, that'll help with the. The wet side more, cause it'll have less ionized.
As far as your lan- organic loading going, going into it, that's based on, that's actually based on the surface area of the pond, so. Well set up for BOD capacity. We estimated there'd be a hundred and sixty-two pounds a day in twenty fifty. We're actually set up for a hundred and tw- two hundred and fifty-six pounds per day, based on the surface area, so. We're more concerned on the, on the water side of things than the, than the facility being organically overloaded. Uh, so just looking, just kind of the research that we looked at, looking at some past, uh, DNR inspection. Reports where they came, you know, it comes out every so often, identifies deficiencies as well. There's ammonia violation in twenty nineteen, um, TSS violation, so that's total suspended solids. Uh, twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty seventeen, and there, the comment in those inspection reports is that those are likely due to just algae. Breakthrough. It's, it's not polluting. It's still something that has to be, has to be met, but it's, it's not.
So when we discharge, we have to be very careful. We have to do it early in the year or late in the year, cause we have to stay away from the algae blooms. Cause that's what gets us on the TSS, so every time. So I, if I discharge, I try and do it like in March or like November, December. Plus, if you look at your, it doesn't really show it on there, but there's certain times where your, your ammonia limits are higher. Like early in the year and late in the year, during the summer, if you have to discharge in August, there is no way you're gonna make it. Cause your ammonia limit is so tight that you'll never get under it, so they kinda force you to do discharge. Certain times of the year, by, just by what they put on there for a limit.
Yep, you're right. Like, the ammonia limits are not on there. Those kinda fluctuate per, throughout the year, but only had. We only had one violation, and sometimes you just get a bad sample, that you grab it. It wasn't correlated, it actually wasn't correlated to a. Like a high wet weather event or anything like that.
Couldn't you put an aerator in there to get rid of some of that ammonia?
Yes, we can, and those are some of the things that we, that we looked at.
That would be probably a lot cheaper than having to do this other stuff.
Um, that is, that's something that we can.
Currently, right now, we don't need it, but I'm not, in the future, we don't know what's gonna happen, cause there's ni- nitrogen and phosphates that they're testing for right now. So here in the next five years, there's gonna be a number that you have to be below, and right now, they're just taking our samples. And they're setting what the bar is gonna be, so when we get to that in the next five years, I don't know if the city of Colton's gonna have to do anything. Just to get under that limit for them? Hopefully not, but if they say we have to be at three parts per million and we're at five. We're gonna have to do some kind of pretreatment with our water. We don't know yet. It's all up in the air, but it, it, within the next five years, it will be coming.
And that's that final bill of, that bullet point right there. Nobody's really sure when, you know, the state's looking at doing like total nitrogen and total phosphorus. All the signs point to somewhere either in the twenty thirties or the twenty forties, so, and in that case, like, if you're aerating. Your ammonia is getting, it's, it's being converted to, to nitrate, that N, and the nitrate is still in the system. So you keep having to have to treat it such that that N is totally out of the system. Into the discharge, so, but you're correct, that, um, like aerators is something. A lower cost option that can, that can be looked at, but also looking. Oh, so just taking a look at the, the existing condition, again, well sized for it, um. Yeah, just kinda considering on those wet weather flows, so there's a few things that, low hanging fruit here, but. There's some areas where, with some aluminum grading, they're a little bit wobbly. Those could stand to get replaced. Um, there's also an effluent structure. This is a concrete slab that the pipe actually goes through. This is on the discharge of the, of the big pond. There's a big crack in this, in this slab. Um, it's not an urgent concern, but. Over time, it can wash, continue to erode. It can affect that pond liner, so. That's something that could be looked at being, that could be looked at being fixed. Um, the main, the main thing that we identified as a deficiency was, so. I'm actually gonna go back a slide here, so this pipe, this is a ten inch PVC pipe. There's, there's an area in here that has a sag. So during the winter time, um, that gets full of water, it, and it freezes, um. The only real wa- the only real way to address that is to, is to replace that pipe. Now, it's not a big deal because we're not running water through that all the time. It's not continuous. And usually, you're not transferring from primary to the secondary in the winter time, but if you had to, and that pipe is frozen up. It, it doesn't have anywhere to go. Again, lo- flows are low in the winter time, so.
So how deep is that water, that sewer line now?
Down there, it's not very deep.
How deep?
Now, at the bottom end, it's probably four feet, and you grab it, it's pretty shallow.
Through, through here, it gets, it's, it's, it's not at. Yeah, we're probably got about four to five feet.
We had it up to, around the corner there where the white, about halfway between the two cells. Remember that one time Larry, you had to dig that up, cause that clean out.
That's why I didn't think it was that deep.
And that caused, what caused that to break is I was trying to move water to the bottom cell, and the pipe was frozen in the bottom, so they were just shooting out at that clean out. So that's when I realized that this was what, eight, nine years ago?
Probably.
That I have to have the top cell as low as I can possibly get it going into winter, because I know that once, but once the ground freezes. I can't move water anymore, so I try and have all the water to the bottom cells before that happens. So it's just a, like if I would leave or whatever, the next person needs, that's something, it took me a couple of years to figure that out. Larry had to do some digging because of it, and that's when we found out why it's doing that, so that's why we're addressing, we're just addressing it here.
Couldn't we put a bunch of dirt on that, raise that area up through there? It's only like maybe fifty feet.
Yeah, it's through that gate though.
Yeah, it's true.
And the other recommendation, and just to be kind of, kinda conservative in the, in the cost estimate with that, is right now, there's. Right now, there's clean outs out there. An upgrade there would be actually putting manholes out there for a little bit better access, and per DNR standard. You'd put a manhole, they recommend a manhole every four hundred feet, so it's about two thousand feet of pipe from. From point A to point B, so roughly about five manholes along that line, and at those, and where that changes. Where that changes direction there, so. Again, uh, conservative cost estimate here, most of that would be tied up in that, in that ten inch graphic sewer. Um, fixing that. Be a probable cost of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So looking ahead on the treatment side and just, just kinda looking at what, what we need to do for, if, if ammonia strip. If ammonia limits become more stringent, or we have to look at total nitrogen, total phosphorus removal, these are just some different. Uh, technologies that are out there for the common in South Dakota, so the first one would, it's, it's called the Sager system. So a submerged attached growth reactor, the, this would get put in the, um, the, the final cell. Build a berm across here, fill this in. There's two cells that go in here, it flows through the system. Through the two cells, gets treated, and, and then gets collected out to the, out to the discharge point. Um, this is a rough schematic of what that looks like. Sometimes people call this system a box of rocks. It's a, it's a chamber in the ground that's lined. It has rocks in it. That is a media that, that treats the sewage. Goes through, there's also a ration lines in there, so basically a biofilm grows on those rocks, and that's what treats the. That's what treats the sewage before it goes out. They're fairly common in, there's, there's, they're fairly common in South Dakota, so. It's kind of a proven method of removing ammonia, so that system that you see there, our estimate on that would be about four point eight million. Dollar or something like that. Um, the second, the second alternative that we looked at, this is called a Lemner, Lemtech system, so these are. Basically covered aerated lagoons, um, so in this one, this would also be installed in the final cell. Um, would need to be as big as, as well, so some fill could be, some fill could be brought in to, to decommission part of that. But flows into a, so there's, there's baffles in here that kinda separate it, so there's mixers and, and aerators in here that. That mix and treat the sewage, going through the series here, it settles out, goes through kind of a polishing stage. Then through UV disinfection, out to the, out to the discharge location. There's just a, there's just a schematic of what that, of what that looks like, so going through that first cell and the second one settling out. Through the polishing, out to, out to discharge, um, that alternative is a little bit more expensive. It's, it's seven point six million dollar. Estimate on that.
What's the, what's the, you know, average monthly cost to maintain that system, like something like that?
So both of these. The, the main cost associated with it, this is in the facility plan, I should put it in.
Yep.
Um, the, the main cost is running the aeration blowers that are out there, so there's a constant. It's, it's three phase four and eighty, there's, it's a twenty horsepower, there's two twenty horsepower blowers. They're just there for redundancy, so. Um, yeah, it's the cost of running a, a twenty horsepower motor, twenty-four, twenty-four seven.
Any like yearly maintenance tasks or?
Yeah, the surgery was on the pipe, and you gotta run some acid or something through it to keep the air and muds open. Every month or year, something.
So the, so it's, it's maintaining those, yeah, it's an, it's an acid wash through the diffusers. Um, the other thing with the Sager, the Sager system is that it gets covered with a peat, or not a peat, mostly like a wood chip cover. So kind of allows oxygen air to go through. There's some weed control that's, that's involved with that. Um, there is, yeah, and then there's a cost of, of maintaining the motors, blowers, making sure the oil is very. It's, it's preventative maintenance stuff, but the main, the main input cost is, is the power.
How often do you have to get, do you have to replace that media that gets put in there after? How often you have to get, you have to replace that media that gets put in there after twenty years, fifty years, two years, anything?
So the media is literally rock.
Right.
So it's, that doesn't really have an expiration.
Got you, okay, I didn't know if there was.
And then will that take out your nitrates?
So that'll, that'll reduce from, that'll reduce from ammonia or from, from ammonia to nitrate.
Okay.
There's.
You can't take a nitrate out of water, a nitrate is a living organism that was, or it's a skeleton.
Nitrate will be, so you can keep, you can keep treating that nitrate.
You can camouflage it, but you can't take it out.
It's, it, you can go through a process of denitrification. So when you, when you do that, it's, so it's another, it's another biological process that's after this, so. These are more set up to look at more stringent ammonia va- ammonia limits, not so much those N and P. Now, there's processes that can be added to the front of these or. Or post of these that can further treatment, that can further treat that, but. Right now, we're just looking at the, that ammonia removal.
Did they take samples of the nitrate levels? Have they been checking on those, where those are at or currently?
Is it monthly or quarterly we do?
You just do ammonia.
Ammonia when I discharge, I do, the water is where we take monthly samples, not just a bacteria sample.
Okay.
Nitrate limits are more prevalent on the low water. So. So moving on from, moving on from those treatment processes, also, also wanted to look at regionalization options, so I know that there's been some. Some talk about, about grants available for, to do these things. Um, so we looked at, looked at regionalizing the sewer, that'd be completely. Pumping all the sewage from, from Colton, either to Sioux Falls or to Hartford. Now, if these options, you'd actually keep the pond system in place to provide some pre-treatment and equalization. So you shave off those, those big peak numbers, um. So it, and it, and it keeps your capital cost a little bit lower, so. Uh, pumping to Sioux Falls, that would involve about seventeen point two miles of pipeline. You'd have to do it in two lift stations, cause it's such a great, cause it's such a great distance, um. So these would be submersible lift stations and have an intermediate lift station about halfway uh, in between. And so you'd kind of go past, past the city of Crooks, this is the, this is the closest discharge point that we could get to. Into a ten inch sanitary sewer, um, so the total estimated cost of this system. Would be eighteen point three million dollars, that doesn't include the treatment costs. So Sioux Falls has a rate structure set up for regionalization, they also provide some credits for. If you equalize and you treat, which going through, going through those, you could take advantage of. You'd still be looking over twenty five years, which is kind of the design period that we look at with these systems. We could look at about four point six million dollars just in treatment, um. That's on top of that capital cost, I know that there may be some grant, we're, we're just not sure right now. Of the amount of grant funding that's available for, for the capital cost of regionalization, but. That's the cost that we're looking at for Sioux Falls.
Roughly a hundred eighty four thousand a year.
Yep, yep, so it's base, so there's, it's, it's kind of structured, just like a base rate, there's a. There's, there're like a typical sewer structure, there's a base rate, and then there's a charge per, per thousand gallons that. That the Sioux Flo- that Sioux Falls would, Sioux Falls would charge. And that's based on their published, published rates, that also ensu- that also assumes rates will. Will continue to incrementally rise here every year. Uh, the other option that we looked at was going to Hartford, so it's a shorter. It's a shorter distance, so only thirteen point two miles as opposed to seventeen point two miles. Again, still need two lift stations to, to make it there, um, so. And for that, we'd be looking at a capital cost of about fourteen point nine million. And the total treatment fees are a little bit, it's actually a little bit less than Sioux Falls, now those are just based on their. They don't have a regionalization rates published, this is just assuming what their. Their sewer rates are published, this assumes their base rate plus their thousand gallons of treatment. So. So we're about at four, four point six versus four point, versus four point four to treat. In Hartford, so between the two. Hartford's still a, it's, it's a better option, but they don't have their treatment, they don't have their treatment. Fee structure for regionalization finalized just yet.
Have they started yet in Hartford?
What's that?
Is there a thing, I mean, I know the, the building, but have they actually started treating water yet?
I don't know, I don't think they have yet.
No, I don't.
So is this taking an effect with the regional system with Colton and Crooks too, at all?
This, this doesn't include crooks, like the, the capital cost. Sorry, the capital cost doesn't include a connection with crooks as well, so that.
Trying to make, uh, where that line's actually going, is it just going straight south?
It's just fall on four, six, four.
Yeah, so crooks would be along this, ah, here. You can kind of, cause of the Sioux Falls, or, or about, yeah, so this would be the, this would be the line that would go to.
It could potentially cost share like that.
Yeah.
Last four sections maybe, two sections.
So then that, four point four million, does that include? So twenty five years, what's life e- life expectancy of a lift pump?
Typically on a lift station, you look at about fifty years, so the, so the lifts, so. We designed the lift station and the, and the force mean. For about a, a fifty year.
Fifty year.
Nice man, typically like with, like with treatment facilities. Like the, that Sager and that Lemness system, we're looking at about a twenty five year design period, so that's presented as twenty five, just so you have something. That's, that's comparable, so.
So doing this, I mean, really your twenty five year, you could add another seven million to it. So at your fifty year mark, your pipeline and everything's already paid for. In order to replace that pipeline in fifty years.
Yeah.
You would have to add a, essentially another seven point four million to that four point three eight million to. Um, just to maintain what's in the ground.
Yeah. The, so, there's, there's also the cost of maintaining those lines, there's air release manholes. That are along, so wherever you have a peak and valley, at a peak, you have an air release manhole. Those need to be maintained, it's also two lift stations to.
Are those in line submersibles or what are they?
Those are submerged, those are submersibles.
Yeah, I put a lot of those in.
You, you can do it in, there, there's some options to do it in some. Some larger pumps, but they actually, they require s- more like water. Pumps that have higher heads, but you have to have screening, like sophisticated screening system. Like a wastewater treatment plant ahead of those lift stations, so that's more of a, that's more of an input cost. Into those, um, also included, this is another control system, um. When you have that amount of pipeline, your sewage will stagnant, wherever you're, wherever you're dumping it into, it's. If it's stagnant like that, it's very, it's very odorous, so anybody driving, if you don't have an odor control system. People are gonna smell your lift stations going, going across those, so. So, yeah. Basically, just looking at it, in, in summary, just the wastewater system. We've got the collection areas that are, to continue to kind of, continue to kind of fix those I and I problems. Um, that affects things downstream, lift station, probably the biggest priorities right now would be the anode bag replacement and looking at SCADA controls. Um, and with the wastewater treatment facility, there isn't an, there isn't an imminent need to upgrade it, but things are growing. Relatively well, but also looking ahead to exceeding some of those wet weather flows and. Making some decisions if, if, you know, as, as flow goes up. Capacity, you start to meet your capacity, get to violations, compliance, or stuff like that, we're not to that point yet, but. So we need to look at, so that's kind of summary improvement, some wastewater side things. Any? Any questions at this point?
Okay, I can jump.
I can jump in, so just looking at the costs.
And we've presented, I mean, everything that was presented tonight is a deficiency that needs to be improved at some point in time. So that's, that's listed out here, so you can see a, a total cost in on the wastewater treatment upgrade. That price in there is for the Sager, you know, that's only at that four point eight. Of course, the cost to do, the capital cost to do a regionalization project, that's greater, you know, much greater, and then there's kind of perpetual costs with that. So in total, it's about eight and a half million dollars worth of work on the wastewater system. That doesn't all have to be done in the next five years, that's just over time, this, there's about eight and a half million dollars, and that cost will increase as, as, you know, time goes on. Now, some things that, maybe you've probably picked up on already, some things that are probably, you know, more higher priority. One, if there is a need to do something on Sixth Street, and if that's something that, that the city does want to pursue, you know, as far as resurfacing that. Then we need to look at doing the utility as well, so if, if, I don't know, you know, we gotta kind of determine where the funding is gonna come from to do the surfacing. But we can't forget about the utility funding and, and a good avenue to do that, and we'll talk about that a little bit. But we got, we have some options that the city's already used in the past on securing some funding.
Worst part is, is we just already sealed that this year.
And that, and that's, you know, that, that slurry seal, I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna help the roadway. There's, there was a need to do something with that surface. The main lift station improvements, what Michael talked about with, you know, replacing the anodes. Do- doing some recoding in lift station, um, adding SCADA to help with some of the flow monitoring, and adding that flow um, meter. So there, that is one item that I, I think would be very beneficial, and that's SCADA. Cause as we start looking at some of these costs of wastewater treatment facility, we start thinking about, you know, fifteen, twenty million dollars for regionalization. Or even five to seven million dollars for just a local treatment system. If, if we have some data, we can tell, we can make those decisions, if we're gonna be making millions of dollar decisions, it's worth it to have good information. So these, these are two items that we think should be on the radar. The, the other items should be on the radar as well, but they're fur- they're further out there. Like Michael mentioned, the, the treatment facility itself, it has capacity. Now, if there is a, is, if there's an industry that comes in, we don't have capacity, we don't have water either right now. So, one, we gotta make sure we've got, you know, water available, but then on the wastewater side, it, it's gonna drive some type of improvement. And whether that be a local improvement, or it's a, it's like a Sager system or something that's implemented into the existing treatment facility. Or if it drives a regionalization project faster. Project financing, I mean, one of these we're pretty familiar with, just utilizing it here on the pre- past projects. It's a D A N R, so it's State Revolving Fund, um, another one that we haven't used, I don't believe, is Real Development. So Real Development has similar funding opportunities, similar rates, um, competitive rates. And they, the, the only difference on there, they set it up as a reimbursement program where you do have to get interim financing on the project. And so you would then go get interim financing with, whether it be bonds or other sources. And then you request that reimbursement after the project's closed out. The current rate right now for thirty year loan on the State Revolving Fund is three point seven five percent. So it's still very competitive, um, there's still some grant dollars that the city would be eligible for. And that's primarily based on what your rate structure is right now. You know, those two projects, so phase one and the work at the lift station. It's a user impact rate of about eleven dollars and eighty five cents a month. And that would be with, that would be with zero grant as well. The implementation schedule, just to kind of put this out there, how long it takes, and we, and we know going through the process, it takes a while to go from. Like, you know, the conceptual part of the project to actual completion of construction, so right now, we're. Not even really at the conceptual phase, and we gotta make some final determinations, what we wanna do as, as we submit this plan. And, you know, make it final, um, but it takes two years to get from an application. On a funding, you know, on funding request, to actually having the construction complete. And I just showed it here, like it's next year, so if, if that is something that we'd want to move forward with, any of the improvements. So next fall, that would likely be the most opportune time, if you're gonna go after S R F funding. That's when the program is likely more flush with cash, you know, they would make determinations in April on funding, so they'd make their awards. And that would be that April twenty twenty seven, design would have to take place, bidding, and then construction would be of summer of twenty twenty eight. And so I was just showing that for phase one, and we were showing just phase two through five, um, just generally, that's, that's the process, if you're gonna use D A N R to help finance. It's a, it's a two year process. We, we do wanna get input on finalizing the report. So we've, you know, we've talked, we've talked to Jared, and, and Trevor and I have had some conversations too on, on, on some of the. On some of the research that we've done, and some of the data we've collected, and kind of where, where we're going with recommendations. But at the end of this, you know, we're saying, you know, phase one of Sixth Street is important. We're saying that's probably important to do the lift station, Jared had mentioned the lining as well, and, you know, that's gonna help. Extend the, the life of the treatment facility in the, in hydraulic capacity sense. Is, I mean, is, is that the direction that you feel, I mean, that we need to go? Cause we, we wanna, we obviously have all the data, and we're making the recommendations, we'll wanna follow the will of the council as well.
I mean, these are items that we have to address.
I, I mean, the biggest thing's gonna be funding.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that's what's gonna drive most of this. You know, if, if funding ain't available.
Then again, you know, it's the same thing though, I mean, we gotta go through the process to see what we get.
Yeah.
I mean, we can only deny it.
Yeah.
So this phase, this phase four, I mean, is it in, do we need to do that? In order to continue with that East development, is that something that?
At some point in time, we will have.
Right, so like.
Well, in order for that development to go.
Yes.
Phase four will have to happen.
Correct, that's why I'm looking, I was looking at that, I mean, if, I, I don't know where, um, the Economic Development Group is at. Currently, um, with progress on anything with that, but.
So right now, where the development group is on there, we're in the process of trying to, with one builder selling. Lot off a third.
Yep.
To build there, that, that water goes good and that property sells, where he sells that house, he's willing to. That, that water goes good, and that property sells, where he sells that house, he's willing to go on to the next phase. Which then he'd do a developer tip on that next phase. Which, that'd be no money against the city or anything, funding on that.
So would, would something like, so.
But what I'm trying to say is, if the numbers could, we could math out the numbers. I mean, there's a chance that that could get put into that developer tip in there, if we needed to, but.
The, this phase four.
That's kind of why we put that farther out.
Okay.
If we can roll that into that, then that would save us.
Then that would save us, okay, so that's why phase four is.
Knowing that, in order for that to go, that, that main has to be lowered, cause it's too high, so.
Yep.
But, I mean, it don't even come into the bottom of the manual on park, so.
Is it?
But in order to get gra- gravity sewer to all ends of the development, that.
Yeah.
Main has to be lowered.
Okay.
Then, I do got another question for the regional. Um, was landowner cost put into it? Cause I would assume, I would assume most of this would run through private.
So, it would be installed, most of it would be installed in within right of way. We would have to have, um, we would have, there'd have to be a purchase of property for that interim lift station. This is assuming that the first lift station would be at the end of the existing pond, so the city would own that. There'd also have to be a parcel, and I think I put, I think I put about a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, oh. Like a one acre parcel.
For that second, for the second one, either.
Either or, either one.
Either one.
That is, for those, for the intermediate, for the intermediate site, that's a s- that's, that's the best spot for that lift station. Now, will you get that spot, will the, will the owner be willing to sell you that, that spot, that's, that's another, that's another discussion. So, but somewhere along those lines, there's gonna have to be, like, eh, but also. You know, there is the option of having, you, you can do it with one pump, you're just not doing it with a sewage pump, and then you have to add some. Amenities on the front of it to, to screen stuff out, and then you can get there in one pump, but if it's gonna be larger pumps, the operating costs, the operating costs go, goes up.
Sorry, they have a lot of.
So.
Manual, like, cleaning screens and hauling away the screens and stuff, I'm assuming you do that option.
You know. Um, so, and. This was assuming that we'd be having access within the right of way. Longers too, so there's, there's a hundred thousand dollars in this budget.
So I mean, in all reality, cause there could, there could already be a right of way full on either side of the road. Cause being, you see all these big water, you know, the big, you know, Mini Haha and Big Sioux, they're all pushing through private.
Well, it's that Hartford, that straight line, there's a natural gas going through that, it's cool. Since I get done here several years ago.
We're talking about the natural gas line on the south side of the road.
Yeah, well.
West side.
It'd be in the west side of the.
West side of four, six, four, and, and um.
That's what I'm wondering, if they put it in the ditch, or they put it, or they put it on.
And, and see, I'm thinking, that ditch is gonna be awfully full.
Pasture.
Between your electric cable, so on so forth, coming up four sixty-four. You know, gas.
It's not, somebody's gonna go over top of you, and that's in the, in the right of way.
Yeah.
Right, if something looks like a good route, right, looked like a good route, somebody else too before you. And then even when you do put something in, that doesn't guarantee right of way, somebody's not coming over top of you.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and the problem is, is if there's already a handful of utilities, I mean, like electric, I mean, how are you gonna dig around them? You know, to even get it buried. You know, cause those are what, eighteen inches apart, twenty-four inches apart, you know, if they're pulling three phases?
You can work.
And, I mean, there's, there's other routes, there's other routes that are available, I mean, at the end of the day, it's.
Well, if you.
The considerable cost is the amount of pipe. That goes, that's half the cost, I mean. Roughly half of the capital cost is the, is just the pipe that goes in the.
We gotta remember, if we're gonna do the, the waste facility, it's gonna be a joint effort with Crux.
Yeah.
The, this re- regionalization.
Yeah, the regionalization, I mean, cause there is grant, there is twenty-six point.
And we, and this can all, this is just a broad.
No, I'm just, I'm just letting you guys know that there is.
Basically, we're just putting this in now, so that if, for some reason, this comes to light, we, we have it in our, our alternative. And so we get funding for it, so that, that's kinda why it's, why it was put in there.
So, let's just say those other s- systems, if we have a industry come in. What kind of capacity can they take, or, I mean, let's just say like, a, a butcher processing plant, for instance, like, taking blood.
Butcher bad.
Yeah, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Really.
You know, I mean, so I'm just saying, I'm not saying that we got anything like that, but a regional system, we can just discharge that down there.
Correct, it would still, so, for.
I mean, are these systems able to handle anything like that, these other systems?
The Sager. They can be, they can be sized appropriately.
Okay.
For that. Um, Sager system assumes that everything goes through the treatment ponds first.
Yep.
Um, the Lemna system, uh, that actually requires raw wastewater to go into it, so. I didn't really touch on it, but that's, that's assuming we actually take a force main directly from the lift station to that final cell.
Okay.
Right there. Um, so, if, if it would have to get bigger, you know, we can look at other, we can look at other areas of where to. To put that in on the city owns, or look at, or look at land that you can acquire adjacent to, to the property as well.
In hindsight, we can pretty much take anything as long as we just have to build it bigger or size appropriate, I mean.
How much of that raw sewage is actually broke down in the first cell? A half or three fourths of it?
Um.
And then it gets down to the second, and the third is your final clarification.
Yeah, a, a vast majority of it is.
In the first cell.
Yep. I'd probably say fifty to sixty percent.
Right.
Is broken down in that, in that first cell. Now, it's, you know, if you keep ponds, if you keep ponds there, they don't have to be operated as such, you know. We don't have time or discharges, I mean, it could just, it can just flow through, you wanna hold some back for, for utilization or whatever. But they, you still kinda have to keep those gun stuff, kinda keep them in place for the regionalization.
That's the first question I have, I think. Yeah, I think we just have some. Work to do on our end, and. See if council is all on board, if we're on the same side of moving forward.
The, the biggest thing is to, like, the phasing can be moved around, it's not like set in stone.
No.
If we think something's more important than this, then we can just flop that. We just kind of, taking the whole city and just putting a, putting dots on the wall, so we can compare with what we think is most important, and just work our way out.
Well, we needed this before, we're just, not that, like, we're just shutting things up the wall and see what sticks, so.
Yeah.
Our, our next step is to finalize the plan. And I don't know if you feel comfortable with us finalizing the plan, you know, now? Or do you wanna have any more discussions and, and give feedback at the next meeting? Is that completely up to the council, how you wanna, how you wanna move through this? We, we, we know that we've got, you know, some information that we just need to finalize the report, and in this, in this rate it goes. But we wanna make sure that we've given you the opportunity to weigh in, provide the feedback, if you wanna see something presented. Differently, whether it be phasing, or if there's.
I mean, yeah, the phasing is just a recommendation.
Yeah, it's. We're gonna, we're gonna put everything that I had a cost estimate on, or that we had a cost estimate on. That's, that's gonna be in the report, and that's gonna be underneath the recommendations, so that's, that's not gonna change. The, the treatment recommendation is primarily gonna be based off of what, what the financial numbers show.
So do you want us to make a decision tonight, to move forward, or can we table it for a month and think about it?
Well, I'd like to, on the repairs, can't we expense those out, like, why can't we do the bags and not the. You know, not the valves right now.
Yeah.
You know, I just would like to see a, a breakdown, and e- even if you wanna just send it.
We won't make, I, we're not gonna make any determinations on what to move forward with, it's just to finalize the report, so that way it's documented. And then we've got, you know, the plan together, so we can then, you know, move forward and review that in the, in the coming year or years.
The full document does have the, the, it has things itemized.
Hmm, okay, so, one question, you said that lift pump's down on a flood zone. Might not hurt to put in, you know, if we're doing lift pump, how much would it cost to raise that top lift? To above flood zone, so we don't have to carry that insurance on it, I mean, it'll make, it'll make the hole deeper.
Yeah, that'd build a berm around it. That work?
You know, I mean, that might be an improvement that could be recommended.
I don't, I think you're wasting your money, though, I've, I've been here twelve years, and I've never seen it flood there.
Okay.
And it wouldn't, maybe, it wouldn't hurt to confirm that's what the flood insurance is on, I think there was maybe some.
Even that year when the water ran over the highway, we didn't get water into that generator building.
Okay.
It seemed pretty, yeah, I know it's close to the creek down there, but it's still.
Little bit elevated, it must be just enough, cause one water over top the highway, it never got into the, into the building or.
Building the berm might be a, a cheaper way to go.
Yeah, but I, I don't.
The other thing, the other thing that would be done is actually raising the lift station, it's raising the lift station itself, like the, the well, well. Cause that would just be adding, adding concrete.
Yeah.
To it.
I feel like it, I feel like it'd be more important to spend your money on, you know, what, putting something in the actual. SCADA system or the bags, we'll definitely do the bags.
Yeah.
But that'll, we'll just do that, I did them like eight years ago or something.
Those are, that's, that's actually, that, those are relatively expensive, those, they're maybe like five hundred, they're maybe like.
Oh.
There's four bags, there's probably five hundred bucks a bag.
How far down are they?
Oh, they're like ten feet or something, I had Roderick come out and just, I had your back down, and I just dropped the bag down the hole and hooked the wires up.
Okay.
That just seems more like it needs to be done soon.
Yeah.
So, we did that.
I mean, stuff like that could come out of the sewer fountain.
Yeah.
And there's, there's money there, I mean.
And that, and that's, this is like an overall.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I get that, I just.
Deal with that, but we just wanted to make sure that we got it in.
I don't, I don't think there's anything that we are like, tonight, that like, yeah, we're gonna go hard with this project, I think what you guys put together is great. I think you can finalize and wrap it up, and then.
Yeah.
And then, we, as council, have our final report, and then we can start making our decisions, so.
Yeah.
Of what items.
And if you decide to move forward with funding, there's opportunities to, to amend, you know.
But I don't see any other items that, that you guys didn't touch on that, that I'm concerned about.
I think it's good, that's well rounded, it's put a lot of work into it, so.
My, my, I guess my biggest question is, on this um treatment alternatives. Uh, your professional recommendation would be what? To put one of these systems in in ten years, five years? I guess, what are we, what are we looking at doing, is something we need to start maybe?
Planning for.
Planning for now, and then ten years down the road, we can start implementing this. Or is it something we need to do sooner because of this development that we wanna get going? Is the development gonna start?
Well, we're okay.
Is it gonna start?
Numbers look like we were okay through the.
We're okay with taking the development.
You're okay on the residential side of things, where some questions start to come in, as, you know, it's taken industrial.
Industrial, or, yeah.
So, I know.
So, if, that's why we kinda, we, I mean, we're just touching notes on everything, that's why we kinda put in with that grant for the feds. For the regional waste facility.
Right.
Just thinking of it ahead, and we're like, hey, shoot from the hip, we'll see what happens, and we got, you know, twenty-six point three million dollars from that, so, or twenty-three point six from that.
Correct.
But, still, there's still some pocket money that we're gonna have to come up with it to, and if that's, we gotta unders- find out. If that's the best route to go, or not.
Correct.
So, I mean, yes, we, we do need to not just turn a blind eye and say, we're okay for now, so. We can start planning in five years, no, I think we need to plan now.
Yeah, well, it takes two years just to do one, two blocks of street. To get funding before we even start the project, is it gonna take ten years to put together a plan and funding? To do any sort of treatment upgrades, I mean.
Depends on our growth, we've got facilities that are enough for, you know, growth.
That's just it.
If we have an industrial come in, or a, or a business that, that's.
Correct.
More water, whatever.
We wanna expand on the commercial side, uh, we can't.
Not right now, it would be nice to be like, if they're, like, hey, you know, we're two years out from.
To be ready, yeah.
Hey, we have a plan in place, in, in seven years, we should have an upgraded uh treatment facility that you could come in and. And plan, right, so.
Yeah.
That's just what I'm thinking of, just.
No, I don't, I think we have to start planning.
Do we need to make a motion on it for you tonight?
No, no motion needed, it's, it's just.
Yeah, no, I, I'd say finalize the plan, and we'll uh get the final report, and we can start, you know, budgeting and planning on which ones we wanna do here.
Cause the funding usually isn't unlimited, there's usually a year cap on those, from what I understand. Isn't it?
Three year?
We can't just in endlessly hold out like a ten million dollar contract.
When we apply for these funding, like, we have to have a plan in place, and then they, and then it's.
We usually have X amount of years to spend that money.
Right, but I don't, it's not endless.
No.
Numbers, it's just.
It's nothing that we can like, go for this, say, Sager system. And apply for it now, see what we get, but hey, ten years, we'll do it, is that what you're trying to say?
That's what I'm saying, we don't.
No.
You don't wanna do it that way.
I don't think we can do that.
Apply for a Sager system, you'd wanna be pretty serious about like, we're gonna pull one in.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's definitely something that we need to continue to have conversations on.
Yeah.
If you do like, phase one, and we wanna do water and sewer on Sixth Street, you know, that'd be a perfect place to, to apply for some funding, see what we can get.
Mm-hmm.
And like you said, that was eleven something without any grants.
Without any grants.
Right, you know, and, you know, there's, so, there's some surfacing there, there's access, of course, to a business. And there is funding out there to, to help pay for that, I mean, that's what we were, you know, looking to apply for, for the community access grant. But there just wasn't enough money to do Fourth Street and Sixth Street. So there's, there's other opportunities to get some funding from surfacing.
No, I think we just, let's see, get her that report back, I think, that just has to happen in our discussion, and then.
And just use that as a blueprint.
Yep. Well, thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for putting that together.
All your work, uh, your time.
I was actually surprised that our capacity was as good as it. But, I mean, I didn't.
You, you, if you'd have seen these numbers five years ago, it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Scary, but for, with all the replacements we've done.
And as we continue to make those upgrades.
Huge difference.
So, did the recording go off?
As time goes, but.
When we unplug the computer, do you know?
You know, okay, it's still on the other side.
Oh, okay.
I know it's a lot of information, I appreciate, appreciate your patience.
Yeah.
No.
No, he's basically putting it together.
We just need to know, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who sent you a bill for that, Weston? You fixed it, you're good.
Get twenty bucks back.
We're gonna move on, so we can get out of here today. Um, we're gonna go, the finalized date with D A and R Community Forestry Grant, plant the trees at Redway, Fulton Park. So we have to get that grant with that date.
Is that in, is that in here or no?
Um.
No, okay.
Was it September, something like that?
End of September, otherwise you gotta try and push it out the next year.
Well, they said they could extend it, but we're still okay with the growing season tree, right?
Yeah.
Replanting.
Do you guys need to go over the second pay request?
Oh, yeah.
While you're still here and before you take off?
Yes, I think we should.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see, yeah, let's figure out.
I I forgot to cover it too, on that, so thank you Matt, I should have covered it during this year before.
Did you guys bring sleeping bags?
I thought it was gonna be a long night. Pay request number two, the second pay request for the Sherman Avenue and Fourth Street project. This pay request includes the piping that's been putting me around, includes the manhole structures. Like I said, there has been some important material that's been holding. It has, it doesn't include any of the roadway work, because none of the roadway work's been completed yet. So this this pay request would be, I don't remember, written down here.
Eighty nine thousand, eighty nine dollars and eighty seven cents.
So then, the next pay, the next pay request that we would have, we'd expect that the roadway work would be on on that pay request. This one, we've we've reviewed it, we've verified the quantities that were sent to us by Underground Connections. We did have a few modifications and made bills and negotiated them with Underground Connections, but we recommend payment to payment to the contractor in the tomorrow.
Okay. Um, what do you think, eighty percent complete when they're on the next one, next pay request? Or is it gonna be higher?
Well, they may be, they may be eighty percent complete and they and they should reach their substantial completion as well. So we'd be able to reduce the retainage, so I, yeah, I'd expect that they'd be probably, you know, well over eighty percent.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna say if there's no concerns on that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, well, second.
I'm really second for Matt, oh, those are paid or set?
I.
Okay, now you're free.
All right, thank you for hanging in with us, appreciate you.
Uh, funding grant?
Funding, what do I have?
Yeah, no.
Well, I thought I thought that was kind of when your funding effort.
Yeah, we just got those.
Inside joke, Matt.
Yeah.
We got the, where are they at? They're in there, I saw them, yeah.
And we we will continue to send out, these are just called funding blasts. We're just notifications that there's funding out there, so any programs that come out, we're trying to, you know, stay ahead of that. Be be upright with the whatever money's available to help assist with some of the work that, you know, the communities are doing that that we're associated with. So if you if you read through that and you, you know, see something on there that it, whether it's GFMP or or another or FEMA grant. If that's something that you were thinking of that, you know, had others concerned about and wanted to pursue it more, just let us know, we can look into it. We we generally have contacts for all the coordinators that run those programs. And so it's a it's a phone call to ask if the L two will not, unless you go for a funding.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Derek. You got this for you, it's just, it's a it's a binder hidden. I don't know if I've given everybody a binder.
Oh, okay.
I've got, I've got one.
If, okay, if you don't have them, Matt, it's, do you have a binder?
You got one.
You're to do if I got one, yeah.
You probably don't have one.
You got one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nice.
Okay.
Keeping up with everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Colton historian over here, so you know. This is Brendan Buncher, the Colton historian.
I I did know that, I had a good conversation with him.
I love the pictures you put out.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yep, thank you.
Got some more for this week.
The forestry grants, we have until twelve thirty one of twenty five, but I think we have to have it done before the ground freezes.
Yep. So there there were several different bids that we did get for trees. In which I think honestly, well, the only thing is that we can't go maples up there, because we already have a bunch of maples, right?
Yeah, I talked to that John today and he said if you plant a bunch of trees, we don't recommend like one or two maples.
Yeah.
But I don't know, kinda looking at what she had on there for where she wants some of the trees, I don't know if that's gonna work, there's a lot of utilities in them spots.
Um, what was Caleb's put together in that?
Oh, so here's a question for you, would it be worth waiting till spring? To see if we want any around that new field?
Well, that's where she's got, you know, we talked about putting some more by the batting cage. Um, there's water being running through there and all.
Well, they weren't supposed to be by the batting cage, they're all they were supposed to be down was on that other park, or other ball field, that South Ball Field, there's just a couple down that way. Just to.
On the west, the west one or?
The east one.
A little field.
A little field.
So right, right on the road, basically.
Well, I think come down in there, just just off of the batting cage.
Oh, I got you, yep, so that would be one spot that I I marked out on my map is there.
Yeah, that's the only one there and then it was just filling some other ones, cause I think we can only get, what, seven or eight trees?
Yeah, yeah.
Fulfill the ten thousand dollar grant.
We should put one up in the corner of Sixth and Minnesota, cause there's that open area there, kinda way up over by the road.
Where you do the water fights.
Yeah, but farther, just it's in far north, so we can pass it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want it real close to the pool, cause we'll get all the leaves.
Yeah, yep.
And then I really need one on the west side of the small little field, the west field. Will be in that little B kinda right there on the south side of the town's ball court.
Yep.
We should have one there, cause that would be a perfect shade tree for that field.
Yeah, I don't think we can wait on the ball field because that next phase is, we don't know exactly when that's gonna happen. So it's, right now it's just the turf that's going in there.
Well, well, I wasn't sure if you'd want some kinda, I don't know, between like the the road and. The grandstands kinda back in that area, or you don't think?
Nah, that's all filled in right now, I don't think you want anymore back in there, cause the trees that are there now, a lot of them are coming out when they, when they get to their phase.
If we get to that phase, if we move that dugout, hopefully with the concessions.
Concessions going to the west, you would want some there along that side of the field, wouldn't you, on that north side of the field?
Can't really go west then, because that's.
By the parking, you mean?
That's the one new raised portion where they sit camp, plenty of trees there.
Well, to the west of that.
Yeah, and then, I mean, that's possible, that's, there's a lot of parks, but they a lot of times they park.
I was gonna say, is there a lot of parking right along there?
That's kinda why I was thinking closer to the, you know, right up by the street. You know?
You're talking on the.
On the far north.
That's like Sixth Street.
I wouldn't, I just, my personal thoughts, I wouldn't do anything in that area.
No, because we got, we're.
We got that water problem there and.
Potentially have a fence there and then somehow you're gonna be battling with that.
Then, so I suppose they'll redo some of that parking in there too.
So I I got probably four trees right now I could put in.
So I would say just get four best big trees that you can get and utilize that grant, cause I think we could only figure seven, so keep down three.
And it's a match grant, we don't have to spend a thousand, if we spent six thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where do you get your trees from?
Well, I was talking with Anderson.
I think you you use your.
They had a lot of them going today, past us.
What scares me about this grant is all the paperwork we gotta do and then there's something, you gotta protect the tree and. Maintenance program and all this other crap that comes with a federal grant that I don't like, but, you know.
There's more, there's more to it than just.
Then just sticking the tree in the ground and slapping some water on it.
Like, let's just forget about it and we'll just, I'll just go buy four trees for three hundred bucks, you can buy a ten foot tree that's got a inch and a half.
No stipulations?
No, just go pick four trees up and just plant them, I can go pick them up tomorrow.
I I mean, well, we don't have to use the grant, right?
No, we don't, we don't, no. So it costs us any money to go after it?
We don't have to worry about the fence, cause the other stipulation is that the get, the forester guy from Ganner has to be on site when we plant them, so.
So here here here's the next question, what are the trees costing?
Three hundred bucks.
No, the the big ones they're bringing in.
Three hundred bucks.
Yeah.
For a ten foot tree that's got a two inch stem on it.
That they're spading in?
I don't know if they're gonna spade them.
Oh.
That I don't know.
Just the trees.
Because, cause I thought you said we can only get seven trees.
What?
I think that was.
I think it came out to like.
Tree cost and.
And spading.
But the spade, so here's the deal, like, she told me if if you buy a three hundred dollar tree and you have them bring it up and plant it, it's another three hundred bucks to plant it, it's twice what. So basically you're paying double. So do we just cut the section out, just five, four trees and just?
And just don't deal with, I mean, I mean.
Honestly, I mean, to me, there's only two spots that I really, really.
I I really want one by, south of the batting cage.
Yep, that one has to happen, cause that one's like heat, I mean, on the, everyone that sits over there, they're just scrounging for.
And then I want one on the west side of the west little field, so when that grows up, it'll shield right along the back there where they all stand.
I think the, what we need to do is just start getting the small, small little trees to infill where. Potentially, we're gonna start losing bigger trees.
We planted them trees, what, three, three years ago, four years ago, and they're doing pretty good, so.
What's the root ball look like on those, three hundred dollar ones?
They're in a pot, like a big flat.
Eighteen inch?
Yeah.
Twenty four maybe?
Kinda like a cow licking tub.
Okay, so you could you could get by with a twenty four inch auger and just go out there and.
Yeah, I mean, so if we're gonna, if we were looking at spending five thousand, I mean, if we're gonna max size that grant, let's just, let's just forget about it.
Yeah, yeah, cause I mean, what's five thousand, to spend ten thousand, we have to spend five.
Yeah.
Well, if we can only spend, you know, if we spend five.
Then we have stipulations with it.
Then we have stipulations with it.
So I didn't like the fact that we have to have, we have to do it on their time, like they have to be on site watching you plant the trees.
I would say, I would say go spend, you know, two thousand dollars, I mean, with tax or whatever, or we'll see, we won't get taxed.
Right.
But hit the two two main trees that we're talking about and I think that's good enough.
Or or what you said four, I mean, at three hundred bucks a piece, that's only twelve hundred bucks.
Well, if we haven't spayed them in, though.
Don't need to, he doesn't need to spade them.
Donate my backhoe, I'll run down there.
Yeah, I just bring my kid loader in there.
Okay, so we're uh, we're not going.
Okay.
So canceling that.
Yep.
Grant.
Okay.
We don't need a motion on that, do we? I don't think so, we're just not applying for it.
Need to let him know that we're not interested in.
Yeah.
State Hazard Mitigation Team, the board, the each and each study FEMA.
That was just more information.
More information, that's what that storm shelter.
Yes.
Okay.
What is this?
That storm shelter that we applied for years ago.
Oh, yeah. We're we're just requested more information on that, is that all you did or?
No, the this, it's passed on to the next.
So we made the first phase.
Yeah, we made the first cut.
Oh, okay, so we're still, we're still on the running.
Yeah.
For the, yeah, and that's been two years since we've applied.
That was like first thing I, when I got on was what happened, actually.
Yeah, with all that, that the FEMA.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, um, sheriff report, blah, 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 we can. I've I've nothing to do with those, really. Uh, city cleanup day, so who wants to take shifts?
I'll do the first shift on Saturday morning.
And I'll join you Julie on that one, just so we can get everything set up.
Okay.
Good, I have to leave at, um. I'll have to leave at like nine thirty, remember, cause just got a like football game, but I can be there at seven thirty or seven to get everything set up. And then I can come back if.
What what do we wanna do for shifts?
That's that's what we're trying to figure out.
I can be there till like eleven.
So let's just say, Julie.
Seven to eleven.
Julie, seven to eleven, and I'll be there from seven to nine thirty. And I think you can be okay and I can come back and do, oh, noon.
Yeah.
What, do the transition at noon or whatever, so I think that hour that I'll be gone will be okay. Unless somebody wants to go out there and sit with her for a moment.
You can, but.
So I'll I'll be.
What time you have to leave, Julie?
I have to leave eleven.
How later we stay?
So we have it till.
Seven.
Seven P M. So.
I have to, I can come, I I mean, I just have, um.
So now we just need someone, I'll I'll stay till noon.
I I'll be there, I can come there till noon, I can stay till about five thirty or six o'clock probably.
I can come in about that five, five thirty and finish the day out, that's fine.
Brendan, you're gonna be, you said eleven?
I'll come there at eleven.
And then you're gonna go till what time?
Five thirty with Tyler, should be.
Five thirty?
Yeah, between five thirty.
Tyler.
We'll do that seven thirty?
Seven.
Tyler, you're gonna do five thirty to what?
Seven.
Seven, we'll finish out.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody shows up.
Is this what we're using?
The last fifteen, twenty minutes, I'm just leaving.
I can probably go back up there and close it out too.
Yeah, do we, do we need two people there or just one?
I don't think so, I think just to get it started, just to have two people, cause it's probably gonna be a mad rush of people coming in. And so I just think two people at the beginning, cause it is gonna be a first come, first served.
Yeah.
Cause when the full are full.
How are we gonna secure it overnight?
So we're talking about.
The tall cones all the way up and then put the flag in or the firegate through it, so you can't drive in that parking lot.
Got a camera.
And then we got a camera that we got for the dump.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna put out there and I think we should maybe get a sign or something or make a sign that says, feel like a dump in, we'll be fine, you know?
Two hundred fifty dollars. Just make it some.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I can do some that morning.
We're gonna have two days then or we're like, we were just gonna have one?
We're gonna have two.
Two.
Seven to what time, when do you wanna?
I can do noon.
To noon. Do you wanna come in on Sunday?
I'm trying to figure out when I can.
Okay.
Um. I'll do what I can, I'm not sure.
Okay, if then, if not, just let me know and then.
How late are we doing Sunday?
I think, I think we can probably, we'll just see how it goes. I honestly think the dumpster's gonna be full on Saturday.
Yeah.
You think it'll be full Saturday?
I I just have a feeling.
There're four of them yet?
There're four of them, so then we talked about, uh, Pete and I kinda talked about, I don't think we necessarily throw the mattresses in the dumpster right away. We only get four dumpsters, our four mattresses, we'll just throw them on a trailer and bring them up ourselves, you know what I mean?
Or just throw them on top of, no, they charge extra, don't they? Throw them on top if they're not over full.
Yeah, just, I just don't think we throw them in there right away if for something stupid like that and then I think the same thing with the tires. Maybe we should just separate those. Tire pile, cause then we could actually.
Is it extra for tires?
We didn't say anything for tires, I mean, I'm not really promoting wanting to take tires.
Really?
Know someone would ever come in or buy tires that I didn't own.
Yeah, I was trying to.
And 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 I know that.
The dumpster's winter, burn with the trees.
Um, I don't remember how much tires are at the city dump.
Yeah.
We we bring ours down there and I just, I don't remember what they charge us per ton.
Well, what we'll do at first is just put it out there, see if anyone wants them for silage piles or anything like that and then just take care of them from there. I mean, I don't think, I don't see us having a, you know, those, those tires, but. I do see us getting tires, but.
Yeah.
Um, then one question was asked about like furniture, I don't know where we wanna push it, like. Um, then one question was asked about like furniture, I don't know where we wanna push it, like, I'm kinda having a hard, I'm like, it's not necessarily, this wasn't really set up to clean out the inside of your house, it was.
Clean up your yard.
Clean up your yard.
Furniture, then fill up a dumpster, we're at fast.
That's what I mean, so.
That's, yeah, someone asked about like a couch or something like that.
Like, I can get a couch, because, or whatever, I mean, but where do we put, where do we draw the line, uh? Because it's not clean out your basement and, in your house.
Yeah.
And we gotta just tell people, you know, hey, you can throw us in the bagger truck, you do have a free dump at the.
Free dump, soup hall.
Yeah, free dump.
Soup, soup halls. You know, if they have means. I mean, I think we just make the recommendation, hey, do you have means to run in this stuff?
Well, I was thinking about, what about that recliner that's been at that apartment building for how long, were you coming to town?
That's what I mean, some, like, you know, some people don't have the means to get it all.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, like, if we could just.
But it's like, if you have the means, and we know that they have the means.
You don't want snow and crap on that.
Just ask them, hey, just run it up to the landfill, it's free, you know?
Yeah.
I think you're gonna have people that are gonna be driving up there and asking, hey, I've got a couch, I have no way of getting it here.
Nope, you gotta get it there.
Yeah, nope.
Yeah, it's all a friend.
Yeah.
Right, you're gonna have that, I know.
You're gonna, yeah, ask your neighbor, I mean, everybody's out running around trucks, and. You know, we're not gonna get the payloader out and start turning to that.
City way, dump on the street corner, whatever.
Because I did have one person ask if we have the payloader up there, I think I dumped, dumped our trailer, I'm like, uh, we're not doing dump trailers, and.
No, no, we're not picking the stuff up off the ground. Now, if we need to push the dumpster down a little bit to get a little bit more room, maybe is one thing, because you're just reaching over and just pushing down.
But I think when we look at it, like appliances, like freezers, just make sure they're, open them up.
Yes, and they're not full.
And they're not full, because if they're full, then we're rejecting them.
Yes. And then, here's the next question, do we pull the appliances off?
Just to see.
See how much room we have?
Yeah.
I mean, how, you know, if we only get two appliances, are you gonna wanna tie up a whole dumpster for appliances?
That's, that's where it just kinda, we have to kinda gauge how this first goes, like, you'll kinda know how the morning going, I think, with what's coming.
Yeah.
Ah, we'll figure all that out when people start showing up with stuff.
But it's nine thirty.
Yeah.
I think we have to shut down the furniture to a point.
Pick up this Friday or Saturday morning?
Okay. Um, budget, September fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth?
Uh. Fifteenth will be better for me, because I'm gonna be gone the sixteenth.
What day?
Fifteenth would be best for me, because I'm gonna be gone.
I think we.
That's next Monday.
Fifteen or seventeenth works for me.
Actually, we should stay with the Monday.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
Monday, at what time?
Six thirty, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Okay, um, council meeting for October thirteenth.
Is on Columbus Day.
We'll just call that following Tuesday, can we?
Fourteenth.
Does that work for everybody, can we just call that Tuesday?
I think so.
Sorry, what, Monday?
Tuesday, the October.
Next one, Columbus Day.
No.
No?
Can't do Tuesday, I won't be here, I got kids at night, Megan's got volleyball. These games Tuesdays and Thursday nights, I've got the kids.
It was Wednesday. No.
No, because darts starts.
No, that's fine, okay, no Wednesday, I'll Thursday.
No.
Got darts.
Okay.
Can we push it, one more week to the following Monday?
The following Monday, the sixth, or you're on, I mean, the previous Monday, the sixth, or you're on the following one, the twentieth?
Follow, the previous Monday, the sixth, we would have planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be, either we do it sometime in that week, or we just go the twentieth, the next Monday.
What about? Yeah.
Let's just do the twentieth, Monday.
I don't have anything on my calendar.
Okay.
The twentieth?
Twentieth.
Okay.
Go the twentieth then?
Oh, no, Monday, okay.
Yeah, twentieth of October. Okay.
So am I off on September?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, uh, what?
So, this September. Oh, okay, nevermind, I'm, I'm, I'm out there.
Okay. And S D L A conference, Tuesday through Friday.
I don't have anybody wants to go, I'm not able to.
I'll wait till comes back to soup halls, yeah.
Okay. Anybody wanna go to it, or do they gonna wait till it comes back to soup halls?
I'll wait till it comes back to soup halls.
Okay. And then you'll be gone the second through the fifth for a wedding?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, then we'll move on to quotes, donor associates review of city insurance. Well, is it's.
We'll be able to compare it with.
Do we want to, it's, it's in our packet, right?
Yeah.
Can we?
Table it.
Table it, everybody review this, review the other one, budget meeting on the fifteenth, we make that decision. Questions or decisions?
Yeah.
Is there anything out of the ordinary that you've seen with, no?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
She did a good comparison when she went over hers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, 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 did she has access to ours, current, okay?
Okay.
So table till the fifteenth.
So it was compared basically apples to apples, as far as.
So are they pretty close?
Versus what?
The liability through apple. Um, no, I mean, price wise.
Yeah.
But did the other stuff make up for it? That's what, that's one, the only question I have, but I'll look at it.
What do we pay currently? Fifty?
Fifty thousand a year?
Versus?
Twenty?
Twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty-one?
Just some of the breakdowns, yeah, I have to compare them, but yeah.
Well, no, yeah, that's a significant difference, so, you know, we need to look at that.
So, let, let's just look over the plans, and, so I make a motion to table.
Okay, Matt makes table.
Seconded.
Larry, second, I'll look at that.
That's for, until next month, right?
Yeah, we'll put this on the agenda for the regular schedule of the month, or, well, the, the twentieth.
Isn't your renewal?
No, I thought we were gonna make the decision by the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, because we're, we're gonna have.
We're gonna have to do it before the budget meeting, because the, it's, yeah, because it, our first, our payments do on the first.
Okay, yeah.
We gotta do it the fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Of September, next Monday.
Yes, when we come in for budget.
Okay, table for the fifteenth. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those who call some sign?
Who's that, who's that, Matt?
I, Larry did.
Then we'll move on to Rastek, um, mini computer, for the conference room, you can see that in the floor.
Yeah.
So we don't even have to go through them, we can just go right off Amazon and purchase the dang thing.
Yeah, and I saw, and if, if we need it, we need it, you know?
We need it to, because.
To make that thing, yeah, absolutely, so I just say, can't she just take her credit card and?
Yeah.
Get it?
Just, just pretty much of approval, you guys are okay with that?
You wanna, do you need a motion for it?
I would just get a motion for it.